Laura, can you hear us?
Laura, can you hear us? We want to have a do a mic check with you.
Mic check.
Mic check passes. Thank you.
Can you see me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
You look good. I'm glad to see you.
Thank you. I feel pretty good today, actually.
Good. I'm happy for that.
I start radiation on Monday.
All right. Wish you the best with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have to open it up because we have a public comment on the closed session. Mayor wants us to go ahead. Mayor Protem, would you like to call the meeting to order?
I sure will. According to my clock here, it's 5:06, so I'd like to call the closed session to order. If we can get a roll call, that would be great.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chair Bettencourt?
Here.
Council members, directors, commissioners, Carillo?
Here.
Loa?
Here.
And Bishop? We have a quorum and...
Should I make a motion to excuse Mayor Hoffbauer or will he be coming later?
I think so. I'll second the motion if necessary.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
So is it time for the attorney to tell us what's on the agenda?
It's for public comments.
Oh, sorry.
Now is the time for public participation for any person wishing to speak to the city council on matters listed or not listed on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you are attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attended by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. There's a three-minute limit imposed on each speaker.
And this portion is as to the closed session only, right?
Correct.
Okay.
There are no attendees at the moment.
We do currently have Mr. Paul in the audience. He'd like to speak to item four point four.
Mayor Protem and council, good evening. This is a strange day today. I'm coming full circle in life and I wanted to come up here and talk about the uncertainty about the city manager. It's kind of vague in the language of what's going on. And, you know, I know there's this curtain here and I'm from Lancaster, but I've been in Palmdale lately helping out get you a world-class entertainment venue at Transplant's Brewery. And on an odd, strange note, I was fired today from a job that they don't even pay me to do to help them improve their security from my 40 years of tactical experience in taverns. And that was always a part-time job for me. But I like keeping order and I like people to drink responsibly and obey the law and just have a good time the right way instead of the wrong way. So impressions matter. And here I am and I'm thinking about what's going on here. And, you know, I went through this thing. I'll tell you a quick funny story about Rex. I met Rex the night that they were going to fire the city attorney or the city manager way back. And after that conversation with Rex, and he loves it when I tell the story in council because I left that conversation. I didn't speak much. I just listened to him. And I thought to myself after I left, nobody can be such a jerk. And it turns out that he likes that. So, but, you know, we haven't had it smooth in Lancaster. That's been a thing that caused a problem. I don't want a problem here. I read a lot of public comments that this man here, J.J., is much beloved in the veterans community. And, you know, I know he's an at-will employee and you don't need cause. But think about this. You better give us a reason because you can't just kick a guy to the curb for no reason that's doing a great job. And I just want you to remember that people are watching this. We lived through this once. It had repercussions. Let's not live through it again. Let's, tell me something, you know? I mean, declobber baby seal? I mean, I don't know what the heck. So tell me something. People need to know. And I appreciate your time and I love this city. And I'm trying to make it a better place to live. And I want people to feel that way too about government transparency. And that's all I'm here to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make a remark. There's absolutely no, nothing underway whatsoever to remove our city manager. I believe all of us have full faith in him. And what's happening in terms of this item is just to correct an issue regarding the contract. But no one wants to remove J.J. I don't. I've assured him of that and I believe everybody else has. So it's not about that at all. It's been put out there in the community that this is a measure to try to get rid of the city manager. That is not true. It has a different reason for being on the agenda. But thank you for your comments, sir.
Laura, before you go on to the presentation for the city attorney, I think typically we say that there's been a public comment. We will submit it with a record. There was one comment on four-four that was submitted, the e-comment. So that's what we traditionally do. I don't know if Laura has these, so that's I just wanted to... If it... Laura, if you're okay with that?
I don't have it. Sorry.
Right. Okay. So then I think we would go to the presentation.
Right. And if we can get that to Mayor Protem Bettencourt, that'd be great. Those items to be considered in closed session are just those listed on the agenda, nothing further. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay. And with that, we are going to adjourn back into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Bishop?
Here.
And Vragasand?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Alright, so we'll, um... The roll call... So, we did the pledge of allegiance, the way the new agenda is. We did the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of the, uh... Total Agenda here. So, merely moving into another phase of the meeting. I'm sorry?
We didn't do a pledge of allegiance. We did not do a pledge of allegiance.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, well, alright, well, someone needs to be admonished. Alright, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance now, and, uh... I see some royalty here in the audience tonight. Can you come up? And I know you can't reach the mic, but we'll get you a mic. And help us with the pledge of allegiance? Nobody's gonna be saying it as pretty as you can, though.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for riches and strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We take a moment of silence in memory of our troops, especially the, uh, service members involved in the recent, uh, incidents in Afghanistan. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Alright, man, I gotta... Alright, um... We'll do these presentations, and, uh, what I'm gonna do is, unless there's objection from the dais, I'm gonna look to move item... Item 16.1 up after presentations. Any objection? Sort of. 9.1 is a Warrior Award. I understand that there was a, uh, scheduling issue with the recipient, so we're gonna put that off, so you may see more than one Warrior next time, right? 9.2. I think... I'll carry this so I can keep my notes together here. Okay. So... We have with us tonight the, uh... Another one of our royalty in the community. And, uh, this is, uh, Little Miss Viviana Fox, Little Miss California, and she is going... Come on up here. You don't get to just sit there and look pretty, you gotta come up here and look pretty. There you go. So, you wanna tell us, um, I think you're going for another competition, correct? Miss them? So, tell us a little bit about that, okay?
Um... She's really good, you go, baby. Um, I'm going to Nationals, and I'm going to one for, uh, Little Miss USA.
Congratulations.
And, um, I'm really looking forward to it.
What do you think, huh? So, this is gonna be one of the first of many certificates that you're gonna get, and you're gonna have to, Grandpa, buy you some frames for these things, right? And, uh, um... I wanna recognize a former Assemblyman here, by the way, Mr. Fox, is he here today? Otherwise, known as Grandpa? Right, there you go. That's her best title. So, the City of Palmdale would like to extend its expression of our pride and your accomplishment on being named Little Miss California. We are honored to have you represent the Animal Valley as you fundraise, perform community service, and serve as a role model to young women. Now, folks, she's gonna be out there, and she's gonna have projects. When you see, when Mom sits there and she hits you up to help her out on these projects, pony up. If you can, if you can put some work into, uh, a little, uh, back work into something, put it in there. If you can dig in the pocket, dig in the pocket, 'cause these things are, these are projects, these are ongoing things. And these young ladies work so hard to represent our community, and you see them, at the end of all of this, the way they have grown, the way they have matured, their, their public stature. You won't be able to get the mic away from them, trust me, so... Anyways, so, we're gonna get a picture here, and we're gonna have family come up with that, too. Okay, come on over here. Guys, you wanna be behind us?
There you go, now everybody can see that beautiful smile.
Okay. Wanna come on up? John, can you get one over here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, here, can you get this one here? Grandpa, don't get this sick. Steve, you wanna come over here?
Sure. Okay, right here, everybody.
'Cause we all know these kids don't get there on their own, right? There's a little bit of work behind it, huh? Alright, so that's yours, can you leave my paper back here? Thank you very much, just give her another hand.
Okay, the next proclamation was, is, uh, for National Suicide Prevention Week. I will read the proclamation, uh, September 5th through the 11th. Where September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention, resources available in the community. And whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year September 10th. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of death among people ages 10 to 24. And whereas in 2019, 4,436 people died by suicide in California, according to the Centers for Disease Control. And whereas over 90% of the people who died by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide, who, who struggle for, with mental health issues. Therefore, Mayor Hoffbauer, Mayor of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim September 5th through September 11th, 2021, as National Suicide Prevention Week, and call upon all citizens to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, neighbors, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence.
Thank you, JJ. Now, I don't come up with those words, these guys wordsmith that stuff. But I gotta tell you something, today, uh, I was up at AV Hospital, and they had the, uh, dedication of, uh, new and expanded, uh, mental, uh, Behavioral Health Center, they call it up there. Uh, and, uh, when you hear some of the stories from people that have been benefited, uh, by that operation there and, and, uh, getting that early recognition, it's like anything else. Uh, if you think there's a problem, there probably is, just ask. Um, you know when people are having a hard time, ask. That's important. If you don't ask, the answer's no, and then, next thing you know, the sheriff or the fire department's finding them. That's not appropriate, so, ask. Be out there, provide that resource, okay? Thank you, JJ. Which one we got here? Oh. Okay, yeah. Hispanic Chamber, come on up. So, I gotta tell you something, uh, there's very few organizations that have the energy and the, uh, and the, uh, uh... I think that's the best word, just the energy that goes...
I'll call over here.
Yeah. The, anyways, the, uh, few groups have the energy. I mean, the Hispanic Chamber has been such a valued employee, uh, yeah, a partner, 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 of ours for, uh, for years now, and, uh, have, have helped, uh, other businesses make it through and, and over, uh, over some of these, uh, uh, humps that we've, uh, been faced with here. And then, they have their luncheons, and they're always a blast. And then they'll do their periodic other events, and they're a blast. They provide, they make it fun to come in and interact with one another, learn about each other's business, how they can all do a better job for the community. And at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, that's what it's all about. How do we do a better job? We can all sit here and tell you what a great job we do, but, uh, you know, so... Just for the Hispanic Chamber, and I think you brought everybody and your relatives here tonight. Uh, let's give them a, a hand, first of all, for what they do. So, uh, there's a bunch of where it has is. A National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and its highlights, and highlights its countless achievements. And the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson. It was enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988. And September 15th to October 15th is recognized as National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. It's a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanic and Latinos contribute to our community and common goals, celebrate the diverse cultures, and work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous, prosperous society for all. This month's theme, Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. The theme invites us to celebrate Hispanic heritage and to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and our hope. It's also a reminder that we are all stronger together. Hispanic and Latino Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of the City of Palmdale. We honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great city. Now, therefore, I, the Mayor, Steve Hoffbauer, Mayor of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of our entire City Council, we do proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the City of Palmdale. There you go.
I just wanna thank the City of Palmdale for recognizing us, and today, we did have a Suicide, um, Prevention Luncheon. Those that were there got some valuable information, but like they say, you never know that the person next to you might be asking for help. So, not just for the month of September, but always keep an eye out for the loved ones and those friends that you have. Thank you.
And just coincidentally, uh, next week, our delegation from, uh, our Ponsetlan, Jalisco, Mexico, will be up here, and, uh, from, uh, uh, the Sister Cities Association, and they'll be up here, and, uh, we're going to be, um, um, engaging in, uh, on the usual, cultural exchange and, uh, spending time with one another, learning more about each other's heritage and stuff. And I know that they have recently joined the Hispanic Chamber as well. So, that's excellent. Excellent, okay?
And I'm here as a director.
Yes. Thank you. Oh, here we go, Jessie. Yeah, I didn't get a, I didn't get a crib sheet here on, uh... On this puppy here today, except that I know that she... She is two years old. And she already smelled my dog, so... Every month, we, uh, feature a cute critter from, uh, from our, uh, Palmdale Animal Shelter here. Um, these, uh, these are our, our homeless pups, and, uh, they need somebody to take them home and love them. Uh, I can guarantee you, these dogs know when you've rescued them. It, it's not someplace just do to sleep. They know they've been rescued. So, uh, Jessie, you wanna tell us a little bit about her?
Hello, everyone. Sunny came to us on, um, August 15th as a stray. So, we've been housing her ever since. Uh, she's altered, she's got all her shots, and she's microchipped. She's ready to go home with anybody who wants her. In fact, uh, today, uh... We had somebody looking at her, but... Didn't work out for them. So, she's still available, and all you gotta do is make an appointment to meet and greet her at the shelter, and, uh, you can take her home the same day. So, she's a German Shepherd mix. And like Mr. Hoffbauer says, she's two years old, but I think she's, uh... Got a little bit of, uh, Basenji in her, because that's as big as she's gonna get. She's not gonna get any bigger than this. She'll widen out some, maybe, with a lot of TLC. Well, of course. Look at that. But, uh, she, uh, she's, she knows some basic skills. She, uh, knows how to sit when you tell her to sit. She's very curious right now. But, uh, I haven't heard her bark yet, even in her kennel. I've heard her, uh, roommate bark, which is attached to her like, like they're twins. But, uh, she hasn't said much. I don't know, maybe once she gets comfortable in the home, she might change. But, uh, she's good with kids eight years and up. So, um, don't know how she is with cats, but with other animals being in our playgroup, she was kinda timid at first, and then she settled down and let the dogs, you know, sniff her out and everything. That's how they do their greetings. And, uh... She didn't, uh, show any signs of aggression or anything in the play yard, but she wanted to stick with her handler most of the time. So, but, she's, she's a pretty sweet dog. She leached up with me very easy when I went to get her out of her cage. And, uh, walking her out here in the park, uh, she was really good. She wanted to explore, but we were pressed for time, so, you know, I'd bring her in here. But, uh, other than that, um, yeah, like I said, she's ready to go.
Need to make an appointment still?
And, yes, yes, you still need to make an appointment.
And they do that, how?
Uh, by calling the shelter, or, best thing to do is go online, animalcare.lacounty.gov, and, uh, schedule. You could actually look her up online and scroll down through her, uh, information. When you get to the bottom, you'll have a link that you can press, and it'll take you to the appointment page. From there, you can schedule a meet and greet, and then, uh, come and see her at the time that, that is given to you, and, uh, well, thank you. And then take her home.
There you go. And Carrie? What is it they get? Uh, wonderful, uh, parting gift if they grab one of our puppies or critters over there?
For anybody that adopts our featured acute critter, um, they get a goodie bag from us, um, or any of the, um, animals that are featured on our, uh, Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page on Fridays. We call it Four-Legged Friday. And another announcement, all, for the month of September, all cats and all dogs 35 pounds and over, she's 37 pounds, just saying, are only $20. And that includes the entire adoption process, everything but the license fee. It's the spay-neuter, it's the microchip, it's all the vaccines, so, any dog over, uh, 35 pounds and all cats, $20 for the month of September.
There you go. So, there it is for ya. I know my wife is watching right now, and she's, uh... So, somebody better come get her, so, alright? Okay, let's give Jessie a hand, if you wanna volunteer over there, they always need volunteers. If you want to volunteer over there, they always need volunteers. I'm gonna sneak out and nobody will notice. Okay, I need a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances. I have a motion by Mr. Loa.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Corio. City clerk, roll call, please, roll call vote.
Yes. Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Vice Chair, Mayor Prochem Bettencourt.
Yes.
Council members, directors, commissioners. Carillo.
Yes.
Loa.
Yes.
And Bishop.
Yes.
And Commissioner Froggo Sance.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a quarrel.
Excellent. So what we'll do here is, we gotta take public comments first. So, city clerk, do we have public comments?
Actually, mayor, we have several.
Okay. So if you've planned on speaking, you need to get the lady, we're gonna call you up. IT, do we have anything queued up?
We currently have four people with their hands raised.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take those, and then we can close the IT section down.
Okay.
So this is public comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the city of Palmdale on the housing authority, the city council, all of our sub-agencies, on the consent calendar, the agenda items or non-agenda items. You should be aware that on non-agenda items, that we do not, we cannot be acting on them. We're probably just gonna direct you to a staff member or take your information back, so we can get back to you on it, okay? All right, IT, what have you got?
We have Dave Bowman. Dave Bowman, please unmute yourself.
Dave Bowman, unmute yourself, you have up to three minutes here. Mr. Bowman?
Well, I actually didn't expect to go ahead and be called, but, you know, Mr. Mayor, for years now, six years at least, we've gone ahead and we've had trouble with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Now, that was a four-year agreement we went ahead and we have. And unfortunately, we're into the sixth year of this agreement, and literally, well, there's a few things that have gone ahead and been done, but I'm pretty sure everybody's aware of the queer vigilante available 10 days ago in relation to a beating that a young Hispanic man went ahead and took. Now, the problem that everybody in the community goes ahead and sees is the level of violence that this individual was addressed by, with, by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Now, I don't know how we went ahead and we got to this point unless it was allowed by our local government. And the reality is, is we expect our local government to go ahead and fix this problem. And it is a deep and serious problem, and it's creating like a division here in the city. And you know, Mr. Mayor, I know that you can go ahead and go to the chief of police, the station captain, and what you can go ahead and do is you can ask, tell this guy to quit. And if he doesn't go ahead and quit, you have an appeals process that will take you right around him. And I just don't understand why none of our city officials have confronted this sheriff's department. So, you know, I'm hoping that before this goes and becomes an issue in the next election cycle, each and every morning, you guys, think about the ramifications of not doing anything about the violence inflicted upon the community by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And just so you're aware, I have a meeting with the sheriff tomorrow, downtown, the sheriff. Also, I am on the liability trust fund board. So I see not just these edited videos that you see, that, I'm gonna leave opinion out of this. I also see the body cameras, I also see the surveillance video from the stores, and quite a bit more. So anyways, I want to reassure you, we take the issues very seriously, and have full confidence in the sheriff's department providing us with a full, competent investigation along with the DA's office. So it absolutely is, these are always looked at. And our station has one of the lowest claim rates out of all the stations in the county. So, thank you very much, sir. Next one, Mr. IT.
Next one, we have JJ, another person named JJ. Go ahead. Go ahead and speak, unmute yourself.
Jesse, do you have the last four digits of the number, or is it a computer?
It's through a computer, they just need to.
David, so David, if you're David, let us know, and come on up.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we got you, David?
No, JJ.
What's that?
My name is JJ, not like J.J. Murphy.
Okay.
But a different JJ, sorry about the confusion.
Okay, we'll go with JJ then. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I just want to know, what is being done about the allegations that are being seen online about city manager JJ Murphy? And also, why is Eric Olson, who is Mayor Hoffbauer's former competitor, being fed information and spreading it on the Facebook pages? I hope the city council members are going to investigate this, because there's a tremendous amount of concern from the taxpayers, myself included, and I'm sure the people listening would really like to know what allegations I'm talking about, and why Eric Olson, your competitor, sir, is spreading information online. You know, it's very disheartening, and I feel the taxpayer, we need full accountability from the public officials we voted into office, all of the city council members. They need to hold the city manager accountable for his corruption, lies, and fraud. If he has questions, let me know.
Right. All right, thank you, sir. Just a tip, don't believe everything you read on Facebook, I think Abe Lincoln said that, so. All right, IT, do we not have a David?
We do not. Next person, Corbin.
Corbin.
Please unmute yourself.
Mr. Corbin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, great. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Hoffbauer and council members. My name is Corbin Ingram, and I reside in Palmdale, and council members, laws, community, or district. Anyway, the nature of my call is that I'm in the process of putting together an affordable housing, multifamily housing project. I'm in the feasibility study with my architect and so forth. I had a rendering, maybe about six or seven years ago, that went through pre-planning, and it was approved back during that time period. This is a totally new rendering that I have, and it's, I want it to be done in some land that I own in Mayor Prochem Bettencourt's, Bettencourt, I'm sorry for breaking your last name, in her area, or her district. And what I'd like to do is set up a meeting, if possible, with the Mayor Prochem, and show her the renderings before I go to planning. And also, I would like to talk about the capers reports that I've kind of run over and so forth, and see what we can do within the capers report.
Okay, we can get Ms. Bettencourt's contact information. I'd suggest that, have you met with staff first? Because sometimes things can get fleshed out there, and then have the meeting based on what you've figured out there. So that's sometimes a better way to go.
Yeah, and there, also, it will be several weeks, for those of you that don't know. I have stage four cancer.
Right.
And I'm in chemotherapy right now, so I can't really meet with people face to face, but I'd be glad to do a phone or a Zoom with you if that's possible. So if you can let me know your availability, and I would certainly like and enjoy to meet with you.
Yeah, Zoom would be great.
So, Mr. Corbin, if you can, if you can call back in the morning, call the main city hall number, and staff can work on setting that up for you, okay?
Sounds good.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay. IT?
Next up, we have Christian. Christian, please unmute yourself.
Got it. Greetings, everyone. My name is Christian Green. I am a resident of the Antelope Valley, professor at Antelope Valley College, as well as former pastor and pastor in the community. I'm here to speak on 16.1, 16.2, as well as the LA Sheriff's Department. 16.1, in regards to the city council, I am interested to hear also what is taking place, but also to speak about, I think Martin Luther King said it one time, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." I also Google why the city manager is so important. And one of the things that they brought up was that usually the city manager is trying to produce their agenda. So my question today is in regards to their agenda, and making sure that all of our city council people, Bettencourt, Loa, Hoffbauer, Bishop, and Corio, really, really remember who put you guys into those positions of power. Remember the people, the people who voted for you and the people who didn't. And also, just think about the change that our city manager has brought about. I've noticed the work that he's produced over the last, what, two, three years of just continuously being in the community. So I applaud you, JJ Murphy, on that. 16.2, when we look at street vendors, we want to be very consistent about understanding that how street vending offers us more benefits. It brings urban public spaces and increases public safety by making streets vibrant and welcoming. So it also produces and promotes, can generate employment, keep people safe, and create the vitality, which is just helpful for human societies. Lastly, in regards to the LA Sheriff's Department, as Dave spoke earlier, there has been a lot of inconsistent lies, violence by our LA Sheriff's Department. And really, what I want you guys to really think about is reimagining our cities for those that are continuously and perpetuated by the violence and egregious acts by our sheriff's department. And so, those are my comments for today. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Green. IT?
Next, we have Mark. Mark, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Thank you for allowing our comments. I have a few items to run through real quick, if you want to take note, put them in the record. That would be wonderful. I'll first start out with the affordable housing project we have in the works. I am a resident since 1989 at 35th Street East and Avenue S. And over my time period here at this residence, I've got several things that I think should be taken into consideration with planning these projects. Number one, the unincorporated area has a situation that's been reported to the sheriffs yearly on gunfire and fireworks. Also, the area, the streets, 35th Street East, is an unincorporated street. And if you ever travel down it, you'll see how bad it really is. Apparently, we don't take care of the unincorporated streets. Why doesn't LA take care of those unincorporated streets? Number two, graffiti around the areas of this 30th and R project. If you look at the records with the graffiti reports, either weekly or biweekly, I personally made phone calls to the graffiti abatement program, which is a great program from the very beginning. The graffiti in the area, and also the, I don't want to call them gangs because we don't have that kind of folks out here in this valley, but they, the, how can I put this? I believe the crime levels in the area of 40th, 35th, R, and R11 should be looked at too with the sheriff's department before we add more of the projects being approved in this area. I understand there's two projects, one on each end of sort of Avenue R, but we're increasing that population in this area, which is going to increase the traffic flow on Avenue, on 35th Street East. It's also gonna increase the graffiti program in this area. And it's also gonna increase the crime statistics in this area. And those are the things that I just wanted to bring to your attention. And when I moved out here, I turned right off the freeway, went to the east side, bought the first house that was available, not knowing what was on the west side of Palmdale.
Can I have to wrap it up, sir?
Pardon me?
You have to wrap it up?
I'm sorry. So I'm wondering how many projects we have in dense residential neighborhoods like the projects for going on the east side. Thank you very much for your time, have a great evening, stay safe.
Thank you, sir. IT?
Next person, M. Rosie, please unmute yourself.
Anne? Can you hear us?
Good evening, mayor.
There you go.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Good evening to the mayor and to all the council people. My name is Rosie Manella. I am a resident of Palmdale. All my children have been raised here. And I'm a bit saddened and distraught to see things that are on the agenda today.
Can you hear us now? You got a bad connection there. Pause your video, that sometimes helps. You there?
We'll continue, we've always had a great relationship.
There you go.
But, like I said, we need to make things better. I wanted to bring to your attention in regards to the suicide awareness that the city did say we were gonna be having a training on September 20th. So I hope this is still happening. In regards to the street vendors, I think that people need the opportunity to make ends meet in a city where there's very few jobs that people with not much education or with a talent for cooking would like to partake in that. So please think about that, and think about if you're gonna take this away from them, what is it that we're gonna give in return? You know, we always say, you know, if you have a problem, always bring a solution. To be honest with you, maybe we can talk about making sure that they're licensed, that they have, you know, accreditation perhaps, but not to take that opportunity away from them. This is the only way that they're gonna make it through. And the wages right now are not as bad as they used to be, but at the same time, gas prices are through the roof, and more than 80% of our community are commuters. And that's where most of my money goes. This weekend, I filled up three gas tanks for my family and I, it was $225. That's a lot of money for people that are not making much. So in regards to the housing, can we please spread it around? Why is that gentleman talking about moving it from Mr. Loa's district into Mrs. Bettencourt's district?
That is what he said.
I think that we should sprinkle it around.
He, the guy lives there. He has another project, though, so.
Very good. I'm just saying, you know, spread it around, so that way communities don't become too crowded. And next thing you know, we have issues with schools being too crowded, not enough grocery stores, that kind of thing.
Understood.
And thank you for the great things that you do do for the city. And always be conscientious about what kind of an environment you're creating.
Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. IT?
We have one more person, Stacia, please unmute yourself.
Stacia?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, good evening, council members. I am Stacia Ameth, and I am the planning commission chairwoman, but this evening, I would like to. I am Stacia Namath and I am the Planning Commission Chairwoman, but this evening I would like to speak to you as a citizen. So I have removed my planning chair hat. And I would like to speak to item sixteen point one regarding discussing revisions to Palmdale Municipal Code two point zero four one hundred regarding procedures of removal of the city manager. This code was revised by you about, I don't know, I think it was five to six months ago with the approval of a very lucrative contract for the city manager. And this council seems to circle back to items that they voted on, particularly dealing with city managers. And this has an appearance of instability and uncertainty. Every time an item that appears to be settled and voted on is brought back, not only is there an expense incurred, which is for stewardship of my tax dollars, but it gives residents and investors a perception of an indecisive council. I believe you made a thoughtful and informed decision on Palmdale Municipal Code two point oh four one hundred already, so please let it stand. I ask you not to discuss revisions to the PMC. Staff and councils' time and taxpayer dollars are much better spent on items that move our city forward, promote unity and make Palmdale a place in which people want to live and businesses want to come and want to stay. Thank you very much for your time.
That all sounds very familiar. Thank you very much, Stacia. That was good words. All right, so IT's closed. City Clerk, can you call the first speaker, please?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Gus Camacho speaking to item fourteen point nine.
Good evening, council members. City staff. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
I've got a loud voice, so, all right. Wanted to take just a couple minutes, or three minutes of your time real quick and just thank you for a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to thank you for all the support you've had for the Palmdale Auto Mall. I am a small business owner, Camacho Autos, Camacho Mitsubishi, and today I'm representing the Palmdale Autos Mall as well. And in the past two years, your team has done an incredible job. There's, you know, I grew up in this valley. I've been a part of Palmdale for many, many years. And this is the best relationship that I've ever seen our auto mall have with the city. And that's thanks to you and that thanks to the team that you guys have put together. You've put an incredible team together. It's a, it's a team that understands the importance of business, understands the importance of shopping local and, and Palmdale being first. So I really appreciate that. We're working on an art project. The city was honored with putting together a public art sculpture that's going to be in the Palmdale Auto Mall. And we were also honored with being able to be a part of the, the team that was able to, to pick out the sculpture and comment on the sculpture and make sure that it's something that's, that's something that the community is going to enjoy and be able to come and see. And I've traveled all over the country. I've been to many, many auto malls. And by far, this is something that I've never seen before. I've never seen something so beautiful that it's going to be in one place like that. So I really appreciate that. We've had a great relationship. We're looking forward to many, many more years of the relationship between the Palmdale Auto Mall and the city, and I do want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gus. I think, like you say, I think we put together a great team and with the, and relative to that piece of art, we wanted to make sure you were in on it because you got to look at it out your window every day.
Yep, we sure do. Yeah, it's got, I must see it right out of my window.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that.
City Clerk?
Next, we have Randy Miranda. Speaking to item fifteen point four.
Fifteen point four, Randy Miranda? Second call, Randy Miranda. Last call. Okay, moving on. What do you got? Who's next?
Alyssa Gonzalez, item fifteen point four.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alyssa Gonzalez and I'm the Director of Sales for Stabber Suites and Holiday Inn Palmdale. And I'm here in support of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District. My hotels and management companies support this long-term funding for its stability and creating tourism on weekends by using a portion of the funds for new events and building on our current events, such as the Kaleidoscope Arts and Music Festival and concerts at the Palmdale Amphitheater to draw in a larger crowd with marketing and make these our signature events here in Palmdale. This increase in visitation brings more revenue not only to our hotels and motels, but also to our restaurants and shopping centers. I have attended meetings with fellow hoteliers and members of the city of Palmdale where we've discussed many ideas that the funding can be used for, such as festivals and fun activities that not only our guests will enjoy, but also residents of our community and neighboring cities. Another idea is to use some of the funds for security at our hotels and motels to deter the homeless from trespassing and help with car theft and other crimes we are experiencing, which will make staff and guests feel safe. We have seen the success of this in other cities and we will be in line with Santa Clarita and Lancaster with a two percent fee. This is also a step in building a partnership with Lancaster and LA County for events and marketing. The number one question I personally get over the ten years of my hospitality experience here in Palmdale is, what is there to do in Palmdale? And I think this plan, I really do believe this plan will offer new, exciting opportunities to our guests and our community and encourage growth of our businesses here in Palmdale. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk tonight.
Thanks. I think just getting the word out is going to help a lot because, good lord, we're, I know I'm busy with the grandkids every weekend.
Exactly, yes.
All right, thank you very much. City Clerk advises me, a couple of you wanted to speak, but they were, ran out of slips back there because there's so much popularity with us tonight, I'm assuming. So she's got a piece of paper up here. If you can just come up and put your name on it so she can keep track of what's going on here. So she's got a little tablet here right to the, to the left of her if you have not signed up. City Clerk, who do you have next?
We have Ruth Levagnos speaking to, Levagnos, speaking to item sixteen point one and sixteen point two.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm here speaking on behalf of all of my friends and family, my tios and tias, my primos and primas who live in Palmdale. And I'm here because you declared Hispanic Heritage Month, which is admirable and I appreciate that. But you can't allow my family, my Latino family members, our Black and Brown community members to feel pride in being Hispanic if they are targeted by the sheriff and if they witness violence against them, against their children, against my people who look like my son and my husband. We know that the LA County Sheriff's litigation has cost over sixty million dollars in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. As someone who majored in criminal justice and has a law degree, seven years of formal education in criminal justice, I know and all the research shows that the number one way to lower crime is not by investing in law enforcement, it's by investing in our communities, by investing in infrastructure, like our public schools, like our roads, like jobs, like affordable housing, like youth services, like community services. That is how we make sure that we lower the crime rate, not by spending more and more money on litigation for our law enforcement. The Constitution says that everyone has equal protection under the law and that everyone is entitled to due process. That's all that we're asking for here for the Black and Brown community in the city of Palmdale. I'm asking for dignity for the Hispanic and the Black community and making sure that everyone is held accountable in law enforcement, making sure that we actually can celebrate our Hispanic heritage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. So you may have something different to say. We don't want to intimidate you.
Mayor, mayor, may I make a comment? Ms. Levagnos, I want to recognize you as a council member in the city of Simi Valley. I thank you for driving up this way. Thank you for your comments. And again, I just wanted to recognize you as an elected woman in the Simi Valley.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
That's okay to clap, okay? Because we have an elected person here in the crowd in the audience. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming up.
Next, we have Ruth Sanchez, item sixteen point one and sixteen point two as well.
Good evening. This is in regards to the vendors ordinance. I have a few concerns. One would be the fingerprinting that you guys are requiring, which I'm concerned because there's a lot of businesses that don't require that. However, the only businesses by searching that you do require fingerprinting is adult-oriented businesses, entertainment, bingo, escort bureaus, fortune teller, massage parlors and pawnbrokers. So, you know, the city does not, does not, does not protect the, I believe it violates the California Equal Protection Clause. In addition, it may constitute a due process violation for the proper nexus. And this does not stay as to why you guys are requiring fingerprinting for the food vendors. SB nine forty-six, it does say that local authorities have to accept additional ID forms and卢as of social securities. So my concern in there is that you guys are requiring things that are not requiring by other businesses and kind of discouraging individuals from having their businesses. Also, the park regulations, it's not clear how the city is going to go ahead and have the postings of the no vendor, the commercial deeds. So we need to look into that. The business hours, the limitation and restricted, you guys are restricting the hours of operations and residential areas. But I also ask, is this also being required from the businesses that are also in the, in the same areas for that? And the second thing that I wanted to go ahead and talk about is our city council, uh, city manager, I'm sorry. The great job that he has done and how we, the community, feel represented and we do feel that he's actually represented us and is doing a great job. And we need to go ahead and keep him in a place, we need to make sure.
I don't hear anybody say anything different, but go ahead.
Well, it is a lot different because we actually, the community is here and we are here to speak and letting you guys all know. We want him to stay. He's done an excellent job. We don't want him to go. Another thing is, as I told you, I did post it on Facebook, that I thought that you, the mayor, has actually been requesting to put this in the agenda to get him removed. That was not so, so that was my mistake, so I do apologize for that, but it still stands. We need, but still stands.
Misunderstanding. It's okay.
Well, it still stands. As I told you in the message, I was going to apologize, so here I am apologizing for that mistake. But he is, you know, having our city manager here is something that we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk? Oh. You gotta turn your mic on.
There's been a lot of speculation about what this particular issue represents. At no point in time has there been any intent or any distrust or any lack of support for a city manager. His job is not in peril. It is strictly on a matter of principle in terms of the balance of influence and power between the city manager and the city council. I think we've reached a resolution on that that will be announced shortly. But he has never been in the cross, in the crossroads of having been or removing. We have full confidence in our city manager. The comments that you just made, Ms. Sanchez, are endorsed by us as well. We think he's doing a great job and I think there was a lot of speculation and a lot of misinformation that was out there that unfortunately just isn't true.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I led off with, if you read it on Facebook, you know.
Okay, so if I may, I, I have to jump in and take the responsibility for that misunderstanding. I am the one that asked for this item to be on the agenda and I, I see that it's created a lot of positive feedback, what I would call. I know that the, the community has been very concerned because this was a busy weekend for all of us. We received multiple calls, received multiple text messages. And like Mr. Loa said, this, this is not the intention of having that discussion and putting it on the agenda tonight. And again, I do take that responsibility because that request came from me. But as Mr. Loa said, and I, I want to echo his sentiments and the sentiments of those that are here tonight to speak about the great job that Mr. Murphy, J.J. Murphy is doing. It's just, it's a cleanup of, of the ordinance. It's something that I thought the council should discuss one more time because of, there is also that portion of the community that feels that there is too much given to, to our city manager. And I just wanted us to have that conversation here amongst us so that we can see what resolution we can come to. But like it was mentioned, it's already come to a resolution. So again, I, I do take that responsibility of creating this misinformation out there, but I think that.
Well, I think, I think somebody else created misinformation. They just misinterpreted. So if you think that, if you're here to say, don't fire J.J., that's not the item on the agenda here. Like Mr. Correa said, it was cleanup language within the ordinance. So, and I think I spent about the last thirty hours talking to a lot of you guys that are out there right now about what that was.
I think J.J. would like to make a comment on this as well.
We have to keep it real because we're getting into having a discussion on the item. The item's coming shortly.
Succinctly. We got a leash. It's his job.
All right, I'll take, I'll try to be succinct. I do appreciate everybody who's come out here tonight. I want the community to know the council and I have always pledged to move forward and move forward collaboratively, and that continues. My family and I are committed to stay engaged and help bring action to improving the quality of life for the entire community. Ruth, I appreciate what you said. In honor of the two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six people who lost their lives twenty years ago and the thousands of men and women who died fighting for our freedom since September eleventh, and to use some of the inspirational words from an American hero, Todd Beamer, Todd Beamer, let's roll together. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, J.J. So I hope that's helpful. So, okay, City Clerk?
Yes. We have Mr. Arthur Callaway, Chair of the A.V. Black Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Callaway?
Sixteen one, sixteen two, and Public Commons.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say quickly on the issue that y'all were just talking about on sixteen point one, that the reason that a fourth, fifth vote is actually good is because it eliminates the ability for personal differences. If four people out of five say that the city manager is doing a bad job, then I, as a resident of the valley, would be more confident that it has nothing to do with personal or political, it has to do with that. It's a poor job. So.
He's burning his time.
So sixteen point two, sixteen point two on the vendor, I am the Chair of the A.V. Black Chamber. I think that, that the, the verbiage in that policy that I read, given to me by Ruth Sanchez, it is limiting economic development to people that actually need a low barrier of entry to actually do and provide for their family. So the problem, the big problem is fingerprints, which obviously targets a specific community. And there are immigrant communities in the Black community, but the majority of immigrants that might have a, an issue with that specific thing is in the Hispanic community. And like Ruth Levagnos, sorry if I pronounced that wrong, but she said that this is Hispanic Heritage Month and we should be passing something that actually enforces and gives them the ability to prosper in the country. And I think that that's just, it, it doesn't do that. So requiring fingerprints makes no sense. I also read that it said that you can't sell between eight and five, between eight AM and five PM, but then you also can't sell after dark. It gets dark at five PM.
Yeah, I think this needs to clean up. I think you're right.
Yeah, so we need to make sure that we don't leave people behind, especially the ability for me as a chamber to actually help somebody get into business and that being something that you can do very easily. Then my last comment is, how many seconds I got?
Uh, well, let's take it away.
Say again?
About fifty seconds.
Fifty seconds, awesome. So the issue that I have is, that happened with the Palmdale Sheriff's, with Sam Chavez. I think that a community check, which is what was announced, that it was a parked vehicle, community check happened and for it to escalate in the way that it has, or, or the way that it did to where he literally got his clothes beat off of him by at least six from the video. I know you said you saw body cam and surveillance video. Okay, so I would say that in the spirit of votes of no confidence, that once we get this information, the, with the information from all the videos taken by the family, once you've talked to the family, then I'm assuming that you already have, being that they were citizens of Palmdale, that you actually make sure to say together as strongly as you did against George Gascón, that you have no confidence in the sheriffs being able to actually police themselves.
You're gonna wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. Who's our next speaker, City Clerk?
I have Vladimir Gomez, sixteen one and sixteen two.
Keep in consideration the commentary on that item.
Yes, good in there.
Put it in context, okay? But thank you, Vladimir. It's your time.
Well, number one, we are coming here for Mr. Murphy. J.J., you have done, done an awesome job, a great job, and we're here to support you. You always will have our support. You have done. You always will have our support. You have done a tremendous good job for this community. In case in the future you decide to run for mayor, you got our vote.
So Vladimir, you took Vladimir. Vladimir, you're talking here.
Okay, but.
You know the drill.
Yes. And number two, of the three vendors, fingerprinting, that's, you know.
I wish you'd have said, I wish you'd have said something when this thing went in a few years ago.
Yeah, but uh fingerprinting, that's a pull. That's not, and also the timing, those kind of things, and also we, we're giving a bad taste. For example, one of these vendors might open a restaurant. What kind of taste we want to give them? What kind of business? You think they will stay here? No, they will go somewhere else. They will move somewhere else. We gotta help them. We gotta be the stone to help them. We gotta move the stone for them. We gotta be there for them, not put in obstacles, as they say, Heritage Month, Hispanic. Yeah, let's support them. As a city mayor, you have, you can do many things for them. There's resources you can find out. Yeah, there, there will be bad things going on too, but there are many things that you can do for them as a council member.
I'm glad that's, it's time to, this for discussion. You guys are bringing up some valid issues and we'll take it up.
And I, and I appreciate that you, if you help my community, it will be very helpful.
Thank you, sir.
And I appreciate that. Okay, and also about the police, uh, what happened to Sam? That's, to me, I was upset, appalled what happened. I seen those deputies there. When I saw the video, I, I know some of those deputies, and when I saw what I, what I saw, I was upset, disappointed. There's transparency. I know Mr. Shafer, and I know that they will not do it, but here we are. We don't want another things to be happening, all these things. There's transparency going on, but not enough.
Right.
So we need to stop this. Our uh, police department, our chair needs to be held accountable for every mistake that they do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Gomez, I also want to recognize you as an elected official with Wilson School District. Thank you for coming to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, get, he's an elected official. Give him a hand. I'm getting off easy. Uh, city clerk?
The last speaker, card mayor, is Marcos Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez.
Non-agendized item.
Good evening, everybody. Um, after hearing everybody today and uh all the topic issues, I, I had something to write, but I'm gonna speak off the top of my head. Out of respect for Mr. Murphy, I will not say anything about your position. I think the rest of the audience has expressed their position on, on your stance. Having said that, the first thing that's coming to mind, I came out here in this community because I wanted to improve my life, my way of living. Growing up out of East LA in Boyer Heights, I have seen everything, including time and time again, LA County Sheriff, repetitive abuse on people of color. I am not saying, it'll be on Facebook tonight by someone that we know, that I'm anti-law enforcement. That I am not. I'm here to tell you we need law enforcement. What I don't embrace is a repetitive abuse on people of color on a simple DUI-attempted traffic stop that could have ended in just potential arrest and a citation, and it did not. This type of abuse continues time and time again here in the Antelope Valley. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. And I will tell you this, as I was listening to everyone, DUI checkpoints over the weekend. Where, ladies and gentlemen, surprise, surprise, on the east side. Never on the west side.
Not true.
Well, data shows moreover, it's always in the center and/or the east side, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I will.
Having said that, it happens a lot. We, there are better ways to protect our community. And it's been proven by Captain Shafer and Captain in Lancaster, there are better ways to communicate and build bonds with our citizens. This abuse that continues to happen is not one of them. So if it's not racism, if it's not people of color, then what is it? Because data shows, according to two thousand nineteen data, when people were pulled over in the Antelope Valley, forty-four percent of them were Latinos. The counterparts are brothers and sisters of Anglo-Saxon, twenty-one percent. In the latter part of that year, it went up, forty-six percent Latinos. My counter brothers and sisters of Anglo-Saxon went down to twenty percent. So as we try to build this community together, you cannot keep repeating and saying Palmdale first. You cannot say Palmdale cares when these incidents keep happening, and we're all at fault. And it's gonna take all of us to improve this together. And my final thing is, as one, again, who grew up in the east side, I'll make it brief. Look, their little brother and sister over on Fiftieth Street East and M, the one on R and Forty-seventh, that's all they're trying to do, is make that living. Is make that living. And the state, and everybody here knows that the state does not allow and does not enforce fingerprinting and background checks. So why don't we embrace that culture? Cause we're not going away.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just so you know, just so you know, the majority of those, if not all of those DUI checkpoints is funded by the state, uh, coordinated through the CHP, and that's why they're on the state routes. So that's why you see the majority of those going down Palmdale Boulevard, because you can't put a checkpoint on a freeway. So uh, that's where it comes from. Those are grant-funded uh through the state, the State Office of Traffic Safety, so. But we can talk more about that later.
I appreciate it.
Yep, okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, and I know there's a lot of other folks here that were looking and listening. Uh, you might wanna stick around.
I think we have a list.
We actually have this, um, the list now.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
The speaker cards are finished.
I misunderstood.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
Um, next we have Xavier Flores.
Mr. Flores.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to read the official uh comment of AV Lulag. Antelope Valley League of United Land American Citizens is very concerned over the apparent use of excessive force perpetrated by the Palmdale sheriffs during a recent arrest of a Latino resident in Palmdale just ten days ago. Our sentiments and beliefs stem from what we were able to witness through a video that went viral in the internet that captured the incident in vivid detail. We all know that videos don't always tell the whole truth and that often the vantage point from which the video was taken can sometimes uh hide the truth instead of exposing it. From our vantage point, however, it seems evidently clear that there was enough officers involved in the arrest of this resident to render a violent takedown unnecessary. From our vantage point, at least six officers were involved and had the man under control. There was no way he was going to escape and no way he was going to harm anyone with all these officers on top of him. The eagerness of one officer in particular to exert his brand of justice and punch the man multiple times while being held down demonstrates, once again, the level of violence to which law enforcement is willing to engage. The exposure of the man nearly lake it, naked, while being escorted to the patrol car demonstrates the kind of crass and thoughtless manner they're willing to apply to people of color. And I reiterate people of color because we doubt very much that a white person would have been treated in the same manner. However, the brutality displayed is not our only concern. This miscarriage of justice took place ten days ago and to date, we have heard not a peep from our elected officials expressing concern over what they saw in the video, let alone an expression of condemnation or even a call for a thorough and independent investigation. Not a peep from the sheriff's administration or from the community advisory councils who are supposed to represent community interests. The only person who has spoken out to date has been our city manager, and we want to thank him for setting the example. As for the rest of you, your silence tells us as loudly as a clear and as clearly as a church bell whose interests you really represent, and it's not ours. You talk of forming human relations commissions and of supporting health equity and promoting social justice, and you join with us in front of our marches pretending to understand us and our plight. But we're not blind. We can see the holiness of your words by your actions. As your, as you as elected officials must know that we will hold you accountable for your acts of omission, just as we will hold you, those deputies, responsible for their violent acts against us, closing.
Thank you.
As residents of the city, we demand you speak out on our behalf regarding this issue and that you demand a thorough and independent investigation. It is our hope that we will not have to return to demonstrate in front of this building to get you here and do right by us.
Thank you. So, Mr. Flores, you of all people know that I'm on the liability trust fund board. I cannot comment one way or the other on this issue because I will be directly involved in this matter with the attorneys, the plaintiff's attorneys, the advocate's attorneys, and have to render a uh, a decision on uh where we go relative to a liability issue. So by law, I cannot do that. Otherwise, I have to walk away from that board. The value of being on that board, being able to, you have no idea how many checks we've written, and this is one of the, one of the few incidents we've had out here in Palmdale. So I, I, you know, again, I, I can, I can't speak for everybody, but we asked Mr. Murphy, and he did a good job of uh spe- speaking on our behalf so that we don't get in the middle of a biased situation if it comes down to a settlement. So I appreciate your comments and we are all anxious, and in fact, I have a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock with the sheriff, so. It, it, believe me, it's, it's on the topic list, so. Okay.
I believe it's Ms. Marcia Abbott.
Is there a Marcia?
Abbott?
Come on up.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Thank you for letting me talk. I did not come prepared to talk. I don't have any notes. Uh, my concern was with fifteen point two. The property, uh, uh, Thirty and R. I'm just really concerned about so many homeless housing projects going in, in a small condensed area. I know there's already one on, I believe, S and around Fortieth, and then there's the one on Q twelve and Twenty-fifth going in, and then this one. And I guess I'm here to speak for the people that live in my little tract that's backed up to that, the little old Casa Linda homes, and I know compared to all your homes, they look like nothing. But they're nice little homes and it's a nice little neighborhood, and I'm concerned how this is gonna affect all of us. I know that our ultimate goal for the homeless is that somehow they can get jobs and become self-sustaining. The people that live in my neighborhood are very multi-ethnic, fairly low-income area. They're the hard workers. They're the ones that go to work every day and work hard, and most of them don't even know about this. They don't know anything about it. They don't get a newspaper. They come home, they take care of their kids and their family and their little house, and then they go back to work. So I'm just here to speak for them, I guess. Uh, I'm really concerned how it's gonna affect us, and we've got our little park across the street, McAdam Park. Uh, we, you know, it's not fancy, but it's a, it's a, you know, a family park for a lot of people and a lot of activities go on there, and I just don't know what the, to have that much homeless uh population, how that's going to affect it. So that's my.
Thank you.
Talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk?
Next we have Mr. Victor Segura. Speaking to item number eleven, looks like.
What, what item was it you were speaking on, sir?
Uh, good evening. I'm, I'm speaking on the uh, quick points on the Samuel Chavez Reyes situation here. Uh, uh, Mayor Hoffbauer, and good evening to council members as well. I'd like to start uh by echoing the sentiments of the great job that uh city manager JJ Murphy has done. Uh, I'm the Vice President of Salva and here representing Salva and the uh, the Latino community that we try to serve uh every day. So it is very concerning for us and taking into context uh what's already been discussed regarding the, the uh, the Chavez Reyes situation, uh, what happened to, to, to Mr. Samuel. Uh, we want to just e- express our concern. Uh, uh, we want to emphasize to the uh council uh that the need for transparency. Uh, we understand the limitations uh that have been placed on you, Mayor Hoffbauer, uh, because of your uh involvement in the, in other uh commissions, that you cannot comment on it. Uh, however, uh, we do expect, uh, especially in the situation that the Latino community is in, especially uh being uh Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, we do expect uh a swift action, uh, in, in appropriate action. And we're not here uh as anti-law enforcement. Uh, my, my brother is LAPD. My brother was, uh, served in the Air Force. We're, I'm very proud of him. There are a lot of our members in the Latino community that are in law enforcement. However, we understand that uh transparency is what, is what uh harbors trust and that protects our officers and that also protects our Latino community. So I'm here to echo the same sentiments and, and just uh make sure that uh we respond appropriately, make sure that we uh show respect for uh, for our community, for our Latino community. Uh, we are proud members of Palmdale. We're proud members of the Antelope Valley. And uh, we thank you for the support that you have given us and we thank you for the support that you've provided to Salva. And uh, and we just want to make sure that uh appropriate action is taken. We want to make sure that this is uh not taken lightly. Uh, we've all seen the, 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 the footage and uh, and we want to make sure that uh our, our, our community is respected and uh, and there's justice for uh Mr. Chavez Reyes. Thank you.
I think we're all looking forward to a thorough explanation and discussion on this item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
City clerk?
Next we have Mr. John Parsamian.
How close was that to your, how you say your name?
I couldn't hear you.
How close was that to how you actually say your name?
Parsamian, that's close enough. Well, I'm John Parsamian. Um, I'm a veteran. Uh, the, here discuss, uh, just talk about sixteen point one. Just wanted to uh, again, show the support for JJ Murphy. I think the reason you guys see a lot of support for him is he's been here for a short period of time, doesn't really know anyone, I think. Uh, it's his actions that have um, you know, have really got the community behind him. Obviously, there was a misunderstanding. It seemed like Mayor would discuss this, and uh, the only thing that I ask for, um, I speak for myself only. I know there's some people that might have the same idea, it's just the transparency. Transparency and fairness as far as dealing with uh the city manager. And uh, I understand you guys already had your discussions regarding the fourth fifth, or why was it even brought up? I still don't understand, but as long as, you know, my only goal was the transparency, so. As long as we got that, I mean, you know, obviously, thank you for everybody coming out, and I mean, this is great to see the community involved in the um city hall meeting, and this is kind of what it takes to uh build a stronger community, so.
That's what this is all about.
Yep, and uh, this is kind of what we fought about. This is, uh, I think this is America as I see it, you know, difference of opinion, and, but you know, at the end of the day, it's all about getting together and making the community right. And, you know, for the people that live here.
Well, we're able to do this because of you and all these other guys, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next we have Victoria, Victorio Garcia. Victoria. Item sixteen one.
Good evening. Good evening. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Victoria Garcia. I'm here representing Salva. It's a nonprofit organization based here in the city of Palmdale. I'm here to discuss and comment on item sixteen point one regarding possible revisions to Palmdale City Municipal Code Section two point oh four one zero zero regarding removal procedure of city manager. I would like to conclude that Mr. JJ Murphy has built trust and established excellent rapport. He has worked with us in moving forward projects and events. I'm here today to highlight Mr. JJ Murphy and share some of the attributes that we've seen with working with him. He has been nothing but cooperative. He has been devoted, helpful. He has been thoughtful and insightful, trustworthy, understanding and warm. Thank you, JJ, for all the work that you've done with our community and also working hand in hand with us in our organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
We couldn't agree more.
City clerk?
Mr. Rafael Cornejo.
Mr. Cornejo.
Item 16.1.
Well, you understand that, what that item was about then, right? Okay.
So, I'm actually going to be speaking on two items, 16.1 and 16.2, but, you know, it seems like that issue has been resolved prior to this meeting. So, good evening and thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to express the concerns about what 16.2 does. It criminalizes and it also decreases economic opportunity here in the Antelope Valley. Personal side note, a lot of families during pandemic and hard, economic hardship times resort to gig economies or side hustles. Oftentimes, those aren't the traditional brick-and-mortar. Oftentimes, those are food vendors. My mother, in time of need in 2008, with the economic hardship, she would sell tamales, and because of that, I was able to obtain a college education, go through high school, and now be a contributing member here in the Antelope Valley. So, I want, I would ask City Council to reflect and see, weigh out the benefits and the consequences of what continuing with 16.2 would do to the Antelope Valley. Thank you.
Just so you know, the 16.2 is merely the placeholder item on the agenda.
Yes.
We're not looking to, we're just looking to have a conversation about it, because some of these very items that you folks are talking to us about have been brought to our attention. This thing was put in a couple of years ago when we had the state saying, you have to do this, so there's a lot of stuff thrown out there. Now, we're seeing that maybe there's a question, so that's what we're going to be talking about later. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify again, that's my bad. I also have to have this item on the agenda because of the discussion that we're going to have later on for those issues that will be brought up, and again, it's not too limited, but also to improve what's there right now, and I won't talk anymore because then this city attorney is going to have to do that. But there's only, there's only discussion on this item, so, again, that's me again.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Randy Miranda for 15.4.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on support of the formation of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District. I've actually been a hotelier here since 2006 in the city of Palmdale, managed several hotels within the area, and I still currently manage the courtyard and the residence inn. So, developing this tourism.
Great place, by the way.
Thank you. Developing this improvement district would actually help us, you know, enhance events throughout the, throughout the city of Palmdale, promote tourism, bring, you know, extended more room nights to the, to the area, and actually overall enhance commerce, you know, throughout the city. Sports is obviously one of our big, one of our supporting, you know, guests that actually stay with us, so we can actually partner with them, as well as adding additional city events that would actually draw people from, you know, greater Los Angeles area, Kern County, for instance, you know, Ventura County, to actually visit the Palmdale community. So, I feel it would be a great benefit, you know, for all the hotels in the area, for us to partner with the city of Palmdale and to develop the improvement district.
Well, we thank you. You guys have been good partners. That's where I put my mom and I gave her a place for temporarily, so, yeah, I think we, I think we get the idea.
Right. Thank you very much.
Okay, City Clerk?
Mr. Steve Hudson.
Steve.
16.2.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I've lived here for just about 19 years, and I have a complaint. There is no place in this town that I can buy a decent hot dog. If a street vendor can supply that hot dog, I'm all for it. In New York, a couple of years ago, every block, I'm tripping over a hot dog cart, a falafel cart, some other kind of food, right there on the street. I think it's a great service to the residents. It's a business opportunity for somebody who wants to leg up in life. It's long overdue, we have these street vendors. That's all.
Thanks.
I guess you don't like Doghouse by the mall, then?
Yeah. I personally look into try every guy that's got, if you have tamales left over at the end of the night, you haven't gone to the right neighborhood, sell those tamales, let me tell you what. Anyways, City Clerk?
One more, Mr. Juan Blanco.
Mr. Blanco.
16.1.
Evening, Mayor, City Council.
Sir.
I am here to speak on 16-1, and 16-1 reads discussion regarding possible revisions of the Palmdale Municipal Code Section 2.04.100 regarding removal procedures of the City Manager. And 2.01, 04.100, removal, A. The removal of the City Manager shall only be a supermajority, four fifths of the whole City Council, subject to however, the provisions of Municipal Code 2.04-1110, which is in addition to after an election for those. In case, in case of intended removal by the City Council, the City Manager shall be furnished with a written order stating that the City Council's intention is to remove the City Manager and reasons thereof at least 30 days before the effective date of any such removal. Now, I understand that this was just a procedural thing, but I would ask, and I think there might be some support, that a motion be made to remove this item from the agenda totally to move forward, because it's probably unnecessary. I support Stacia Nameth and Ruth Sanchez in her statement, because this reflects the instability of a council to move on a, on an item and then want to take it back later on. Instability is not something that we can afford in these day, in this day and time, and I believe that when you're looking for someone to fill a job position, they need security, or at least the idea of security and job, and job placement. So, I would just ask that you guys motion to remove this from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, thank everybody, and we will move on now back to our agenda. Go back and flip pages again. Okay, so, I said after we did the public comments, we would take up 16.1 so that you guys could get home at a reasonable hour this evening. So, 16.1, I don't know who wants to, city attorney?
I can give a brief intro to it, just what the item is. So, the matter before you is just the option to discuss amending the Palmdale Municipal Code. There's an item directed by council. It's an opportunity to review the code and direct any changes at a future meeting date. An option to change that any contractual authority with the PMC at the baseline. Essentially, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I gave my limited statement earlier. I think I, I think it'll stand there. I appreciate everyone, so everyone here, everyone there, everyone across the community. I think, I think the dialogues be good, and I look forward to moving forward.
Okay.
There's some language that's going to be brought forth at the next City Council meeting, or what is this going to happen, Mr. City Attorney?
The discussion will take place here, what language it would like to direct the staff to bring back.
It should be consistent with the, with the contract part, that should be consistent with the contract discussion, correct? So, can, maybe if you were to state that, you know, what the contract discussion was, then we would know how to properly make adjustments necessary to the ordinance. That make sense?
Right, but I can't state the contract discussion into the record. Here's, here's what I can say, is that the City Council has brought the issue back, and if there's an intent to amend this item to achieve the goals of the council, this is the opportunity to do that. And so, we may do that by leaving the item as it is, or by changing and adding additional language to achieve the intent of the council. J.J.'s go.
Right. Would council be okay if I come back to council with compromised language that bring forward in a future meeting?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're there, and I think that basically this is going to provide the security that you're looking for, and you got, you got two teenage girls, and we want to make sure that we maintain, that we want to make sure that we keep the City Manager here, so somebody else doesn't grab you because everybody else has got vacancies at the same time. It's a lousy time to try to move with your kids, so we get it, so.
So, can the City Attorney and I work on language to bring back to a future meeting?
Yeah, and I think what we're looking at is making security through to the end of your current contract, correct, sir?
The language is to be consistent with discussions that were had in closed session, right? And I want to make a comment. For people that have run for City Council and that may be planning to run for City Council, when I was first elected, one of the very first things we were taught at the legal cities is that there has to be a balance between staff in our city represented by the City Manager and the City Council. And when this measure was brought forward in the past to change it from three fifths to four fifths, which has always been, prior to now, the amount, the votes necessary to remove a City Council. In fact, I don't think we have ever removed a City Manager from his job or her job in the history of the city. It's never come up. But in my estimation, and has nothing to do, as I've already commented and will comment again, I have full faith in Mr. Murphy. I have no quarrel or issue with him other than ordinary differences of opinion on things that do not amount to wanting to remove him from office. It's purely on the principle that there has to be a balance between the City Manager and council, staff and council. I think that there's some language that has been discussed that will address this issue and will become an ordinance that was discussed earlier. We can't comment on those particulars, but I think that the ordinance will reflect what our comments were there. So, there was all of this discussion, apparently, on social media about us wanting to remove Mr. Murphy. Just wasn't true. It just wasn't true. We don't want to disrupt this city. We want to continue with the progress that's being made. We're making progress in terms of acting as a region rather than two separate cities or three different political entities, the Los Angeles, the Los Angeles County, City of Palmdale, City of Lancaster. We're working to run forward, to move forward this region, and Mr. Murphy is an integral part of doing that. But it also is incumbent, I believe, on our council to make sure that we have checks and balances, so that everything is as it should be in terms of, in terms of the two relative powers. So, I thank you, Mr. Correia, for bringing that forward. I appreciate you bringing that issue. It's not to destabilize anything that's been going on or to send any kind of negative message to anybody, but should any of you run for council and get on it, then you're going to understand that there is a need to maintain a balance and a check on staff represented by the City Manager. City Manager is the only employee, other than the City Attorney, that the City Council has. Everyone else is reporting directly to Mr. Murphy or to Mr. Beck. So, that's what it was about, and I think it's great that the community came out to endorse Mr. Murphy. He deserves it. I go along with it, but it was kind of a misapprehension or a misrepresentation of what was really going on, and that happens in a democracy. We have the right to speak out, and I'm glad to see that so many of you did it. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you. I think that pretty much sums it up, so, anything else we need to?
Yeah, I just want to, again, thank you guys for coming and letting us know how you feel about the excellent work that Mr. J.J. Murphy's doing for the city of Palmdale. At the end of the day, it's all of us who benefit from the great projects that we're currently working on, and throughout this Facebook misinformation, I took something positive from a posting on Facebook, and that was that the mayor from Lancaster, Rex Perry, said that removing him would set us years back, because we have made that connection finally break into the cactus curtain, as it's called. Having the mayor from Lancaster say on Facebook for everybody to see that if Mr. J.J. Murphy were to be removed from his position, it will set us back years of the things that we're working together finally after all of this stuff.
And that's part of the problem when you get people out there with deliberate misinformation campaigns. I absolutely believe that it was not just a mistake on certain people's parts that drew a lot of us in, and, but anyways, I think we're all moving forward. John and Tony and all you guys, I couldn't have thought of a better place to spend my Sunday, so, thank you very much for helping keeping me on the straight and narrow there, and anyways, okay.
Well, can I finish my comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, again, the, the way that this turned out to be, the misinformation and the comment by another elected official in Lancaster saying how detrimental this would be for us, it's not taken lightly for me, because we have a lot of good projects that we're working on. The EIFDs, the enhanced infrastructure financing district, that is a partnership with the county, who is another of the jurisdictions that are up in the Antelope Valley. So, again, that's something that I took very, very seriously when I saw that comment. And just by having you come out here tonight, I think that that put us all in check, all of us here, because there is overwhelming support for what Mr. J.J. Murphy has been doing for us, for the community. So, thank you again. I do not, I take your, your comments seriously, and I feel that I'm in check if something were to happen to Mr. J.J. Murphy now. Thank you, guys.
So, is there, so, is there a motion?
I'll just, I'll just say quickly, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I appreciate my council working together, the unity that we've achieved, and I appreciate how the city is moving forward, and, and especially the comments about how we stay focused, we, we embrace the fact that we have goals that we need to work on as a city in moving forward, such as the employment and 50,000-plus commuters we have going up and down the freeway every day, and just keeping our eye on the, on the prize, which is, which is those things, improving the quality of life and working together as community for all the residents of the Antelope Valley, to make sure we, we better everything. So, I just, I appreciate everyone coming out, and I appreciate everything we've done to work together and move things forward, so thank you.
I would move that the ordinance be discussed between the City Attorney and the City Manager, and a ordinance be brought forward consistent with discussions that were had today in closed session regarding the employment contract.
I'll second that. Okay, any, anything else? I don't think you're in on this one, so, okay, you have a motion second. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Vice Chair Prochem Betancourt.
Yes.
Council members, directors, commissioners, Correio.
Yes.
Loa.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
And Froggo Sons.
She's not on that one.
Okay.
She still agrees.
Okay.
Thank you, the motion cares.
Everybody, thank you very much for coming out. Understand that there's people out there whose goal is, is to distract us, and I'm not going to allow us to be distracted. That's why I took my holiday weekend to come out and speak to people, as did Mr. Correio, as did Mr. Loa, I'm sure Mr. Bishop and Ms. Betancourt. So, we don't take that baloney lightly, and if given the opportunity and we can have a dialogue, that's what's great, so, all right. We're close enough to 9:00. We need to take a break, and then we'll move on with the balance of the agenda. To those of you that want to leave, this would be a great time. Thank you very much. City Clerk, you want to? City clerk, you wanna?
Uh. Thank you very much.
On item number fourteen, the consent calendar, uh been advised that fourteen five has been removed because of a uh typographical error that's substantive to the item and it needs to be republished and reposted. So fourteen five will be removed this evening and will be heard a later date. Uh council, any uh items you was pulled or do I have a motion?
No, I'd like to pull uh fourteen point two and fourteen point nine and fourteen point seventeen.
Fourteen point what, sir?
One seven.
Seven, twenty-seven?
One seven, fourteen point one seven.
Okay, anybody else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, hearing no other. Do I have a motion to approve all the items except the lungs removed by Mr. Loa and fourteen five?
Some of them.
Mr. Loa, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Corio is a second. Do I have a, the city clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Prochem Betancourt?
Yes.
Council member Corio?
Yes.
Council member Loa?
Yes.
Council member Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye, thank you. Okay, fourteen two, who's got that one? Somebody from finance?
I could, uh, hey, no.
Mr. Loa, did you have a specific question?
No, I I just wanna hear the report, uh if we could, um on this community choice aggregation and the um termination of one loan agreement and entering into a new one.
With that, city manager, you wanna handle that?
I can explain it.
Sure.
So when this was originally, as you know, every quarter we get a new updated, oh, here, there's Keith.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, Steve.
So, the original agreement included the term that the repayment of the loan was not possible. So, this particular, I guess, resolution is to cancel the contract for the original term and replace that with a new one with $5 million instead of $1.5 million originally initiated. So, this new agreement has a term that is more reasonably attainable. So, within the next five years or so, during the time CCA does not generate positive cash flow, this will actually support that operation. And at some point, CCA will have enough money, and then we'll be able to pay back the city with the reasonable timeframe, and that's what it's about. Any questions?
Need a mic?
Richard, we are, Council, we are still in line, October 2022. And basically, what this was is when we looked at the financial arrangement of the initial deal and the aggressive payback, when we're getting the most up-to-date financials, we budgeted accordingly, we put the money in the budget to make sure that we actually support this CCA financially to get off the ground running, and when it has the money, it'll pay us back on favorable terms. So, we don't want to start off with a struggle and then come into the council and say we need 500,000 a year or seven. We want to fund it appropriately, invest in it, and deliver to our residents a great option.
So, it's consistent with the spirit when this was first adopted, I believe it was in late 2018 and early 2019, still in the same spirit, still moving in the same direction?
Yes, we took one pause, the one year we paused, because when the numbers came back, they weren't as financially good, so we took a pause because
Right.
but we're full steam ahead and we're planning on 13 months from now.
As soon as other fees and stuff keep changing every time we turn around, so we need to give ourselves a little bit of a little buffer here, huh?
That's what it is. We're just trying to put a long-term approach at the proper financing of this investment upfront.
Okay. All right, I really appreciate the explanation by both you and Steve, and Keith, rather. I appreciate it, I just thought it'd make it a public item, but I move to approve it.
And Mr. Loa makes a motion, any comment? Second, please?
Second.
Mr. Kurio seconds the item, City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafar.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item that was up was 14-9.
Right.
This is the one that Gus Camacho was speaking about earlier.
Right, and I wish he had stayed, but in any event, I think it'd be good for the public to see what Mr. Camacho was talking about. I think it's a beautiful enhancement and improves our endeavor for public art. So, if we could just
Do we have that?
show us what the example is so we can put it up there and show it to the public.
The image of it?
Pardon?
You want the image?
Yeah, the image, correct.
I don't think we submitted that, so we don't have anything to show tonight.
If we can show it.
Hold it up high.
Yeah. I'm not sure how close Arvin can zoom in here.
This is a great example of what we can do with...
You're best fan of white there, George.
This is an example of what we can do in collaboration with this Public Arts Commission, the community, business community, and so on.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Zoom in any tighter?
And maybe we can have our social media team put that online tomorrow.
Let me get that up, so...
It'd be great if we could put it out there for everyone to see and...
George, just pass it around the crowd so they can pass it and see it, probably on the other side.
And I'm sorry to catch you off guard there, but I thought that maybe we could show the public as well as people here. But I think it just shows what we can get done. I think this is going to be a matter of great public interest. I think it's something that enhances our city.
It'd be one of those places where people stop to do selfies.
There you go, kind of like going into Vegas, right?
Yes, exactly.
It's a beautiful thing, and thank you so much for doing it, and without more, I'll move to approve it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Loa made the motion, do I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Mr. Bishop seconds, City Clerk. Laura, did you have anything?
No, I saw the picture, I think it's absolutely beautiful, I really like it.
Yeah, I think it's cool. Okay, we have a motion, a second, City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafar.
Yes, thank you very much. So, move on to 14-17, who's handling this one?
And I'll make a point about why I'm bringing it. First of all, it's a project that I think is long in coming in terms of improving the traffic conditions around the mall?
Yes.
In that particular area. It's a matter that's being brought forward in my district, and I'm very happy that we've reached to this conclusion, but if you could explain a little bit more about what we're doing there for the public.
Yeah, so this is a Measure R project, one of the ones 110 million that we got back in 2013. And what it's basically going to do is widen 10th Street West about...I'm going to go exactly back, so I don't want to give you the wrong information.
A bit.
We're going to widen 10th Street West from six lanes to eight lanes from about 600 feet south of Rancho Vista Boulevard to Avenue 04. We're going to have some additional right-hand turn lanes from 10th Street West onto the northbound State Route 14 on-ramp and the AV Mall entrance. Some traffic signal upgrades and modifications at 10th West and Rancho Vista, and then also at the mall entrance Destination 08, and then the southbound off-ramp. So, basically, what this amendment does is, once we got the geometrics of the lanes, we realized that we had to go in and actually start acquiring some of the property. So, we're going to be working with the private owners, this would be like the Applebee's or Carl's Jr. on the other side, both the east and west side of 10th Street West, and working with them to acquire what we need, and then also working with them to re-put back the landscaping that they already have in there, the monument signs that they would actually probably put in the monument signs themselves, but we would give them the space and the layout that they need.
Great. So, on 14-17, one of the things we've been talking about for about six years, and I thank Mr. Loa for chiming in on this with me the other day, is the need to get a bus pocket over there, because we reduce our traffic, especially southbound, by 33% when the buses are stopped there. So, I would make the motion, we approve this, but make sure that we have that we make a part of this, a solution to the bus issue over there.
Okay.
Because I know that there's some issues with the utilities and stuff, and I thank you very much for that discussion the other day, but I would make that motion, but make sure that they get included in it, please.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Before the vote, I have one more question. The holiday shopping system is coming up before we know it. Work is not going to start before December, right?
They're still in the design, yes.
It's going to take...
They're still in the design, and then, once they go into the acquisition, typically, acquisition is at least a year. So, and when we do go into construction, yes, we will definitely not do it during the holiday rush hour.
And it's a great, I think it's a great addition, and you're being very careful, very technical?
Yes.
And caring about this thing. It's important not just to Palmdale, but to the, obviously, the mall, but to the entire Randall Valley, so...
Yeah, it's the busiest intersection in North County.
Once it gets done, I think we're going to be very proud of what's being done.
That'd be great.
So, thank you, and thank you, Steph.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, I did second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, was that you? Okay, so I made a motion and then Mr. Loa seconded it. Anything further, Laura? Okay. City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafar.
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes care of the consent calendar on Item 15.1. And Ms. Reyes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are requesting a public hearing to hear public comment on the draft Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for Fiscal Year 2020-21, obtain citizen input on community needs for the 2022-2023 Action Plan, review and approve the 2021 CAPER, and authorize the City Manager his designate to make necessary changes and submit the CAPER report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The CAPER provides an overview of all the HUD funding that we've received for CDBG Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs that was spent in the current fiscal year 2020-2021. Staffs available for questions.
Thank you. Did we get any public comments prior to this?
No, not at this time, Mayor.
Do you have any other public input?
Staff didn't receive any comments. Yes, it went out with public notice.
Anything in mind on this item?
I don't have a question whenever is appropriate.
Thank you very much, okay. Motion to close public hea...Oh, anybody, did anybody else sign up in the audience? No?
No, sir.
Okay, motion to close public hearing, please?
So, I'm second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, so order it now.
I do have a couple of questions.
There you go.
Okay, and I don't know if there's funding for this issue, but I looked through it to see whether the word "mental health" came up anywhere. I saw assistance by race and ethnic background and so on, and assistance for homeless, but I don't see anywhere where it addresses the issue of mental, mental health, or any kind of assistance for that. And if CDBG provides for that purpose, then I think it ought to be included, but I didn't see it, unless I'm wrong, but I checked for it.
We will look into that, sir.
Okay, all right. And so, what is it that you're wanting us to do tonight about this, just to hear it?
To approve the CAPER so that we may submit it to HUD.
Okay, and will you take into consideration the issue of mental health?
We will for the 22-23 Action Plan.
Okay, taking into consideration the fact that this is suicide prevention month? The policy that we've had in our community regarding mental health, and I want to commend the City Manager for his leadership in terms of having this discussion periodically in terms of addressing that, but I think we need to be active in terms of finding any and all funding to address that problem.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for your leadership.
All right, anybody else? Or a motion?
We'll approve it.
Second.
Mr. Loa made the motion, Mr. Kurio seconds, City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafar.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anonymously, 15-2 is a public hearing on Resolution 2021-093 for adoption. Has to do with the density bonus agreement, and that is the only item that's on the agenda here is density bonus agreement. We will...IT, do you have anybody queued up on this item?
There are no raised hands at this moment.
Okay, City Clerk, do you have any...
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
A move.
Mr. Loa, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing done, so order. Okay, staff?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have Resolution Number CC2021-093, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving Density Bonus Agreement 20-001, Agreement Number A-7437 pertaining to the construction of an affordable multiple-family residential development located on the northeast corner of East Avenue R and 30th Street East.
Okay, so, Council, any comments on the density bonus agreement or a motion? It's up to you.
I want to acknowledge those comments by those residents that came by earlier today and at the planning commission when this went for approval. I still believe that this is a project that will benefit the homeless population and the veteran population. I've already received an email and a couple of text messages letting me know how they disagree with the project and what they will do in the next election, because they don't like this project on the east side. I believe that I've been very vocal about these type of projects that they need to be throughout the city, but I'm not going to get into that. My intention, again, is to acknowledge those comments for those residents and those that took their time to let me know how they feel about my action tonight. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'll just make a brief comment. You know, we, as a city, are more and more having less and less control over our destiny in terms of the development, the design, the planning of development in our city. This is happening to all our cities in California, and oftentimes, this is really out of our control. There is a reality. We need affordable housing, and it needs to be placed wherever it's appropriate, over the entire city. But it needs to be consistent with the kinds of things that we want to see in our city. We want to have a vibrant, a wonderful place where you can raise your children, where you can have access to jobs. We're hoping to bring more jobs here, well-paying jobs. But sometimes, it's the city telling, I mean, the state of California telling us what to do. And we also have to take into account the entitlements that a property owner might have and what they wish to do with their property. So, I know there's a lot of controversy over things like this. It's called NIMBY, not in my backyard, and everybody's opposed to having projects. And this is, that word "project" that was mentioned in one of the statements is a pejorative term. It's not even used in fair housing anymore. When we develop these kind of housing projects, it doesn't mean the projects that everybody's accustomed that were built in the 40s and 50s in LA that were bringing about some negativity in terms of crime, gang, and violence and all that kind of stuff. That's not what this is about. This is about addressing an affordable housing issue. And when somebody comments that this is going to necessarily increase gang involvement, crime, violence, and those types of things, there is no factual basis for that. There is none. There's no connection that anybody can make between bringing a project like this with 57 units, and we're just simply talking about making a density bonus here. We're not even addressing the issue of constructing it or approving it or anything like that. But we want to bring forward projects of this kind without using the pejorative project. It's a housing development for people who need housing in our city. So, I move to approve it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, or a second? I'll second the motion. City Clerk?
Oh, wait, wait a minute. I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I just feel forced to do so after what I heard. Yeah, we want affordable housing. The state mandates that affordable housing be placed throughout the city. In fact, that's part of the housing element that every city has to comply with. So, I agree with what you said, I appreciate the comments, but cities are mandated by the state through the housing element to make affordable housing available throughout the city. In fact, we could be in big trouble by unintentionally segregating this type of housing on one side of the city. So, if, you know, we, yeah, I agree with you, we have to make every effort possible to provide affordable housing, but we also want to comply with state law. And state law clearly says that it has to be provided throughout the city, so... I just have to make that clarification, because I do agree with you, we need to make affordable housing possible. Yeah, a lot of the times, that's to do with, you know, the value of the land and those sort of restrictions that are placed on affordable housing, other things, but we have to make every effort to make it available throughout the city.
And I specifically remember, sometimes I have memory problems, but I just spoke a few minutes ago, and I specifically remember saying, throughout the city.
So, I think we need to remember right now that the topic right now is a density bonus.
Right.
I think there's some very valid comments. I think there's also something, there's a value in, you know, part of the problem we have with the stigma with many of the older buildings we have in town is, quite frankly, those were built during, when the county zoning allowed you to take a 50-foot-wide building and put it on a 60-foot-wide lot. And this cram it all in there with no amenities, a very little level of design standards. When you, if you were to take that and say, you know what, we're not going to build that there, we're going to put a luxury building in there, and I'm dealing with this with some clients I had down in LA. You bring that in there, now you've created an environment where the guy living next door that wants to move to a nice building can't afford to move to that nice building. that nice building, and the guy that owns a building he has says, "That guy's getting $3,000 a month. I'm tearing this thing down," and it just goes on and on. We've all seen it down in LA and what happens. So—and there's something—there's a value to creating nice housing where someone can move next door, they can continue to go to the same church, their kids can go to the same school, they can have the same friends, go to the same shopping, and that upgrades the neighborhood. So, you know, you got to take a look at it from that perspective. You start putting in—if you don't address it, then we end up with rena problems. We end up with state coming down on us and saying, "Why haven't you built this stuff?" You know? There's a number of categories for these housing issues and stuff like that. But I don't want to get too far off track, and we all have already, and I'm surprised the city attorney let us go this far, but I'm probably going to be spanked tomorrow, so. Nevertheless, to avoid a public beating here, we have a motion by Mr. Loa and a second by Mr. Corio. City Clerk, can you please call it?
Mayor, before we do that, can we take a two-minute recess? Before we take a vote, can we take a two-minute recess?
Sure.
Yeah.
Guess he wants to tell us something.
Okay.
Right, right. I'd just like to confer with Mr. Dorr, Assistant City Attorney.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Okay. To call the public, call the rep up to have him speak to us here? Could you state your name for the record and give us some clarification?
My name is Mo, Mohana of High Ridge Costa. I'm here, about 15 minutes due. Thank you for the opportunity. We wanted to confirm that the full management security plan—
We can't hear.
Can we make sure to turn up his volume a little bit? All right.
Hello, hello, hello.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
I'll restart. Good evening. My name is Mo, Mohana, President of High Ridge Costa Development. Thank you for the opportunity to come up and clarify. We wanted to clarify that a full management security plan was submitted to the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale to be reviewed. That specific management security plan included full description of the security cameras that are throughout the site, the monitoring system, the security patrol. That was one of the items raised there, and we wanted to confirm that that is being provided. This is specifically a community to serve the underserved. This is a community to serve the same veterans we took a moment in silence today. This is a community to allow someone to have an address, so they can fill out the second line at the DMV of what their address is, so they can apply for a job. Many of the residents that are living here are residents that have jobs. Many of the residents that are going to be living here are residents that will have services provided them to help them secure jobs, to be able to pay rents they can afford. As was mentioned earlier, there are many ways to deal with the problems that many cities have, and one of the fundamental rights today is affordable housing, to be able to have a place with stability that they can have—go to the same church, that they can go to the same job, that they know is theirs, not just for tonight, but for many years to come. And the key we bring to the city here ourselves and the other developers, that I want to commend the City of Palmdale for having done their homework, is they have probably some of the top or the best affordable housing developers in the nation here. We develop affordable housing. That is all we do, and we are long-term owners of affordable housing. We are here to be part of your community, to serve the community, and serve those that are underserved. Thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. I was made aware that Mr. Corio needed to recuse himself, so he's going to withdraw his second, and I will—I will—I will second the motion that Mr. Loa made. If Mr. Loa is okay with that?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So—
I just wanted to say I echo the support from my fellow council members and appreciate those who came out to spoke on this item today.
Very good.
Mayor?
Before your speech, and you certainly spoke very loudly on it. I think it's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I got some calls and letters on this, too, and I said, "Hey, how about you call the Sheriff's Department and ask them about the last couple of buildings that we put in over the last few years?" They never go there. That's not the buildings they go to, so. All right. City Clerk, can you please call a roll?
I think J.J. would like to say something. Mayor, can I just say something, based on your security comment? The city is, at our next meeting, going to award a contract for our citywide security initiative, so I'd like you to talk to staff, because moving forward, any housing project developer, we would like to be able to tie in with our citywide security to provide greater ability and situational awareness. So just wanted to—I was impressed, and I know I'm probably speaking for Mayor Pro Tem Benton Court, who always talks about, "What's the security plan? What's the—how many cameras? Are you going to have cameras?" So I was speaking on our security—citywide security initiative. We are starting with four phases, but eventually we want to grow that so that not only on this campus, but throughout the city, when our public goes to parks, when our public—you know, so it might tie from your facility to the closest neighborhood park, things like that. So just wanted to put that on your radar.
We would welcome to that opportunity, and I want to emphasize—I highlighted one item of the management security plan, but our property management company has a whole program that works with law—with local law enforcement, to work with Community Watch and several other items that are described in the plan. But aside from just the cameras, we look forward to working very closely with you on the overall security, on holding meetings onsite if necessary, whatever it is. We are part of the community. It's in our best interest to make sure our residents and our neighbors are protected and are taken care of. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. I think we got a little bit off topic, but that's great. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Benton Court?
No.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item fifteen-point-three is a public hearing of a proposed Resolution 2021-086 for adoption. We have Senior Planner—
Benjamin Fiss?
Benjamin Fiss will be here. I end up messing everybody's name up, and it turns out somebody else is there, you know? But, okay. Staff, to read the title of the resolution, please?
We need to get Mr. Corio back in here.
Oh, yeah. They go in the back like the—when they put the music headset on.
He's recusing himself on this as well.
Okay. All right. Anyway, staff, do you want to read the resolution, please?
Resolution CC 2021-086, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving density bonus agreement 21001. That's Agreement A-7438 pertaining to the construction of 151-unit affordable housing development located at the southeast corner of 25th Street East and East Avenue Q-12.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so IT, did you have anybody queued up?
There are no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk, do you have any speakers?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. So seeing that, I'll like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing then.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing done. So ordered. So the staff recommendation on this, again, this is strictly on the issue of the density bonus, because all these issues that we just bantered about previously, that's all been flushed out by the Planning Commission previously. So the staff recommendation is to approve the density bonus on this. Council, any comments or a motion?
Well, I think that in the project that we just approved, the issue of security was addressed, and the staff reported it was looked at by the Planning Commission, but that's the note I have on this particular project. What about security? And I don't know if that was addressed in here or not.
Is that a topic we can take up?
Maybe skewing outside the bounds with that.
Can you assure us that that's been looked at, so we don't end up getting in trouble here for talking—
A security plan has been provided, and the applicant is present as well to present their project, if you would like to hear.
Okay. Where's the applicant? Sir, can you come on up here? And Sheriff's Department, you guys looked at this, and you guys are satisfied with the plan as presented? Somebody? Anybody? Bueller? Bueller? We good?
They did look into it.
Yeah, I'm hearing no objections. Sir, can you state your name?
Good evening, Council. Tim Sewell with Meta Housing Corporation. I'm Vice President and Director of Permanent Support of Housing.
You guys have done some other decent—
Yes. We are the developers that led the effort to build Course and Arts Colony East and West, and provided the city the Course and Park Pool.
Okay. So you want to give us the Reader's Digest version, because we can't get into a lot, but we want to give you the opportunity to—
Sure. We have worked with staff to develop a density bonus that will result in 151-unit affordable housing development consisting of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There are going to be 73 one-bedroom units, 42-bedroom units, and 38 three-bedroom units, with affordability levels at 30% of area median income up to 60% of area median income. So that means a household of—one-person household for one-bedroom unit would pay as little as $611 after utilities, to a larger household at 60% AMI, paying $1,760 a month net of utility. So we're carrying to a broader, broad range of income levels for families. It's going to be complemented by robust supportive services or residential services to help residents incorporate into the community and leverage resources.
You have onsite maintenance and management?
We have two units devoted to onsite management and maintenance. We also have—
Makes a big difference when you have a resident manager.
It really does. It's made a big difference at Course and Arts Colony East and West, and it will make a difference at the Juniper Grove Project, which we're currently constructing at Division NR, and it'll make a difference here at Palmdale Terrace.
Thank you, sir.
Could you repeat the income levels and what the cost would—in other words, what the rental amounts would be?
They're ranging from 30% to 60% of area median income. For a one-bedroom unit, that would be the lowest rent level at $611 net of utilities, up to a 60% AMI three-bedroom unit, which would be $1,760 net of utilities. And that is a three-bedroom, two-bath unit.
Okay. And who is—who's making the determination of who qualifies for these lower rents? Who makes that? Is that something you do, or you work with the County of Los Angeles with this, or the city, or what?
The county is not engaged as a financing participant. Will work with Jon Stewart Company, our property manager, to run the lease-up process.
And these are—this process and the numbers are all established by the state, so, you know, is that—we don't go—
Correct. We structure the financing structure and apply to the state for loan commencing tax credits for the project.
Okay. And you heard the previous developer address the security issue?
Yes.
Could you give us a little bit more specific?
Sure. I think very highly of Mr. Mohana and High Ridge Costa. Meta Housing, similar to High Ridge Costa, also deploys a robust video surveillance system for the project. We have it implemented now at Course and Arts Colony East and West, and we're constantly looking to refine our security at our sites. Course and Arts Colony East and West, we found gaps in the system, so we're committed to going back and ensuring that any gaps in security are addressed. We're constantly refining our security measures at our projects.
And how does this density bonus assist you in developing this project?
It provides us three incentives. One is we are reducing the patio sizes, I think, from 200 square feet to, I think, 60 square feet. We're finding that the patios that we've developed at Course and Arts Colony East and West aren't really serving the purpose of folks sitting on the porch. It's kind of an area for collecting bikes, et cetera, which we think is a little unsightly. The other incentives have to do with reducing the ratio of washers and dryers that are provided our residents to a level that's consistent with the Tax Credit Allocation Committee mandate of 10 washers—or one washer and dryer for every 10 units.
Five, sorry. Five.
Okay. All right. Anybody? Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Five. Okay. Five, sorry. And the last incentive escapes me, but Ben, you might be able to share what that incentive is.
Yeah, that was an increase in travel distance from some of the dwelling units to the parking spaces because of the size of the building and the shape of the lot, the configuration of the lot. It was required to have a better designed project. Some of the spaces are a little further than what we normally require.
So we're accommodating him, or are we accommodating the city standards?
The project has requested an incentive for the provision of affordable housing, and so we are recommending approval of that incentive.
I see. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Or a motion? Anybody going to make the motion on this item? Or I will. I'll make the motion to approve the item as presented by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Bishop, second. Okay. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tem Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifteen-five. We have—this has to do with the adjusting of the meeting. Staff, please, can you please read the item, please? The ordinance?
We have fifteen-four. And to take a—
Sorry?
We're at item fifteen-four.
Oh, okay. I skipped that. I'm sorry. There's so many scratches on my paper here. Item fifteen-four, please. Who's doing the staff report?
Luis Gonzalez, Economic Development Coordinator.
Thank you, sir.
Good.
All yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Luis Gonzalez. I'm the city's Economic Development Coordinator. Before you is item fifteen-point-four, a public hearing to hear comments on the formation of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District. After the August 17th City Council Meeting per Government Code Section 54954.6, the city mailed notices to all lodging businesses. And in this notice, this is an opportunity to hear comments on the formation of the Tourism Improvement District only. No actions are required at this council meeting, and this is only an opportunity to hear comments on the item. This item will be brought back for public comment, and a resolution to finalize the formation at the October— formation at the October City Council Meeting. Over the past twelve months, city staff has worked closely with hotels and motels to develop a plan to increase weekend and overnight stays in Palmdale. We continue to work closely with all assessed businesses, um, having most recently met with the group last Wednesday. Our Tourism Improvement District is a self-assessment district in which the funds that are raised can only be used to benefit those who pay into the district. Tourism Improvement Districts have been adopted throughout California and nationwide to provide funding for tourism and other related activities. Based on the feedback we, we have received from the hotels, the goals of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District would be to increase overnight and weekend visitation, for example, uh, investing in our current filming program, which would generate additional overnight stays, the enhancement of current infrastructure to attract state and nationwide visitors, the development of the Palmdale brand, and establish a regional partnership for events and marketing with LA County and Lancaster. The development of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District is in line with activities that other cities are doing, and it's necessary to keep us competitive. If the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District is, uh, is approved, it's expected to be established, um, in November. Thank you, and if you have any questions, Luis Garabey and I are available.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing. I think we heard from those folks earlier. Seems like we had this on the agenda twice now. IT, do you have anybody queued up, sir?
There are no raised hands at this moment.
City Clerk?
No, we had one e-comment earlier, and I believe City Manager already addressed that. That was already submitted.
We did hear from, uh, someone who spoke directly on this, I think from two, uh, speakers.
Okay, so based on that, uh, we will open a public hearing, and we, City Clerk just gave us that report. IT has nothing, so I need a motion to close public hearing then.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Hearing done, so ordered. Uh, that's all we need to do at this point, correct, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And I just wanted to, uh, I had a meeting with Mr. Garabey, and thank you for your work on this. Uh, I've, I've brought the issue up before about the small operators, and I think there's only two or three, and I know that something's being built into the bylaws for, uh, uh, the, 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 what's it called? The, uh, Palmdale Tourism Impact District? Am I correct on that?
Yes, so...
Improvement District.
Improvement District.
So, yes, so in order to, um, better include all the hotels, um, as we're developing the bylaws, we were gonna, we are gonna include a, 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 in the bylaws, we will have a statement that says one of the, one of the members on that board has to be from a hotel with less than ninety rooms.
Okay, eighty-nine or fewer.
Huh? Ninety or fewer.
Eighty-nine rooms or fewer, okay. And, uh, so that's being written in. All right, I mean, I, I think that there's some really small hotels. There's only a couple, but nevertheless, uh, I thi, I think that we need to, uh, make sure that they are participating in this. I don't know that they would necessarily agree that they're going to benefit from it, because I think that really the target, uh, to bring in tourism are, uh, you know, persons that are going to be traveling here to, uh, to enjoy the, the hotels that perhaps cost more. But the smaller hotels need to be included in the discussion.
Yeah, we need to make sure to submit it for them.
No, absolutely, and, and we continue to work with, um, and communicate with all the hotels, so all the lodging businesses in Palmdale do have a copy of the Management District Plan, and we're constantly emailing and keeping them informed, and, and we're working towards, towards getting their input and, and getting as much feedback as we can.
Okay. And, uh, I understand that you may have visited some of the smaller hotels?
I did.
Okay, all right. That's good.
There we go.
Appreciate the outreach.
Thank you, sir. All right, fifteen-five. This is, uh, staff, staff can read the title of the ordinance. This is for, um, this is the formal part to change the meeting night, uh, and, uh, we have to have an ordinance to do that. City Attorney, you want to read that?
Thank you, Honor. This is ordinance number fifteen sixty-nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale amending Palmdale Municipal Code Section two-point-oh-eight-point-oh-four-zero relating to the setting of the regular meeting dates of the City Council.
Thank you, sir. We have, uh, do, do we need a motion to introduce that ordinance?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Loa and, uh, Mr. Bishop, all in favor of introducing the ordinance? Say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, so ordered. We'll open a public hearing. We kinda had it open earlier, but IT, do you have anything on this item?
There are no hands raised at this moment.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, do we have any, City Clerk? No, we have nothing, okay. I need a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing done? Have a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen sixty-nine?
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Bishop made the motion, second by Mr. Loa. City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Before you do that, I just want to thank the council, uh, for the consideration tonight to change the, the meeting nights. I also want to thank the, the public and staff, because I know that that staff will also be affected, um, by this change. Again, I, I thank you all. I know that, uh, there's been some, um, uh, rearrangements of meetings that some of us had to do. Uh, we all have our private lives. We all are private citizens. We are, I'm a father, a husband, um, an employee, and I know that, uh, I'm not the only one that had to make this, um, modification, so I want to thank you, Mayor, for your willingness to look at this and, and the rest of the council as well.
Thank you, sir.
We had plenty of discussion regarding this, uh, you know, the impacts it may have on, uh, staff, uh, and on, and, and on the public in terms of their participation, so we reached a, a compromise here by doing it on Wednesdays and, um, by limiting it, limiting it, uh, for four months to see how it works. Um, and my understanding is that this will begin on the second meeting in October, not the first meeting.
Or is it November?
Because of some timelines.
I think it's November, isn't it?
No, I think it was October.
Yeah, it would, Chris, right, it'd be the second meeting of October because it would take effect thirty days after today's meeting.
Right. All right.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bedencourt? Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, sixteen-one, we already dealt with. Sixteen-two, I think we heard a lot on that. Is this something that we want to send back to staff and have them look at some of these issues that folks have brought up?
The, the reason I brought this up, uh, is so that, um, we could get an opportunity to the public to let us know, um, what the, the changes could be, if any. What I heard is fingerprinting equal protection law says be nine forty-six, park regulations and business hours. Again, my intention is to bring that up, uh, to the council's attention, that I, I believe that the, uh, our ordinance is more restrictive than the state's. Uh, so what I'm looking for is if the council would entertain the idea of, um, having staff work with, uh, the public that came and spoke tonight, uh, so that this can really be something that is a fair shot for everybody. And if I'm not mistaken, was it Steve Jobs who created this multi-billion dollar enterprise, um, by working out of his garage? I think that these type of businesses are really something that could spark, uh, economic development. I think that if regulated right, they could also, uh, provide sales tax to the city. Uh, my overall goal is safety, obviously, uh, but it's also, uh, a cultural aspect of, um, of us. We always talk about how, um, inclusive and how we have different, uh, cultures, and, and I think that this could lead to having that inclusiveness and providing the opportunity for all types of different cultures to be part of, being able to provide what we grew up with, in my case. Uh, I lived in Wajahara for fifteen years, so I, I know what the culture is over there. And, uh, my intention is even further than that, is to see if we can even look at, um, creating a district or a, an area where we can celebrate this multiculturalism that, that we talk about. I know that a few years ago, there was an effort to do that. Um, I'm not sure what happened, but it just died out. It was never continued. I fully understand that there has to be the interest from a, a shopping center owner or some, that somebody that is willing to provide the land to do something like this. And what I'm talking about is if you're familiar with, uh, the city of Norwalk, they have Little India, uh, there's Little Tokyo, there's all of these different, uh, places where the different cultures can go and see what the culture is like about. I, I enjoy doing those things. I don't only go to Little Mexico in Lynwood. I, I do go to, uh, Little India in Norwalk. I like, like Indian food, and that's maybe not, not as authentic as it can get, uh, but it's, it is, it's something that, uh, I want my children to be part of, knowing that there's other cultures out there. I take them regularly.
That is a great idea. I think we have a developer that's trying to find a mechanism to create an environment where the vendors and the food trucks and stock can all come together and then provide sanitary facilities. So I know they've been talking with staff on that, and I look forward to that.
Yeah.
So I think, staff, do you guys have the idea that what we heard tonight and the concerns?
I have, I want to make a comment. One of, one of the, um, one of the sectors that's impacted are businesses that are, um, you know, that are mortar, brick and mortar, that type of thing. Many of whom are, uh, minority. They're Latinos and, uh, other minority groups that are struggling, particularly with the impact of COVID. And, um, this is not, uh, only restaurants, uh, it affects, uh, uh, flower shops, uh, retail, small retail outlets that are, uh, that are selling articles of clothing and, uh, and things of that sort. And, uh, and these folks are paying, uh, taxes, they're in paying employees, they have to, you know, they're heavily regulated by the city and the state and so on. And what I would like to recommend is that, uh, is that these, these, this, uh, group of business people that are being affected by this, you know, that they have some input on this. I get calls about, uh, somebody setting up a, uh, a food vendor, uh, right next to a restaurant.
Right in front, yeah.
Right next to them, or right in front of them. And, uh, I think we have to be concerned about those people, too. Uh, so if we have that input, I'd, I'd, I'd like to be, have it included in, in, uh, what the report's gonna be.
Can staff take a look at that? And, and, uh, uh, I mean, at the blink of an eye, we can get twenty or thirty restaurant guys that come into a meeting over the health department. I think we ought to be able to get a bunch of them and discuss that, as long as some of the vendors, so...
If I may make the comment on, on that point, um, with regard to the regulation of food vendors, uh, the perceived community animus or economic competition is not something that the city can look into with regard to developing regulations.
It doesn't prevent us from having the discussion.
Right.
With you, with you guys, be able to talk about that. How do we, how do we...
I, I'd like to take, uh, sit down with the people we heard from tonight, the Economic Development Team, and look at the, what was current, uh, based on some of the comments we heard tonight about being more restrictive than the state. We'll take a look at that, and we'll bring you back something to, uh, noodle on.
All I'm, all I'm saying is that there are established businesses that are, uh, licensed by the City of Palmdale that are operating out there, struggling, and sometimes have, uh, competition from, from, uh, other persons that are, that are trying to get started in business. I understand that, and, uh, uh, but I need, I need to see that we're gonna be able to include the businesses that might be affected by this, uh, in the discussion. That's all I'm saying. I'm not necessarily opposed to, uh, having these kind of discussions, but the business sector ought to be included. And a lot of those, as I said, are Latinos, African-Americans, Asians, and, uh, and other minority groups that are in business and being affected. They need to be included in the discussion.
Okay.
I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Carrillo bringing this forward, and those who came out to spoke, speak tonight on the issue. Uh, I appreciate, um, I appreciate your stand on, and, and look forward to opening up that discussion to the community and making it so everyone has an opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Good.
All right. Good? Good?
Okay. Can I take a moment, personal privilege? I'll be right back.
I think we're just about done.
That's right. Before we get to that.
Okay, clock is ticking.
All right.
We're in recess. Nobody wants to hear this next part anyhow. We're back on the record, and we are at item number seventeen. Uh, anybody have anything they want to, um, elucidate on here? On any of these items for all of our... I think it's important to have, at least let each other know what's going on, because you have stuff that comes up that maybe is a legislative item that we're, you know, opine on at, uh, at the state level and things like that. So if you got stuff that we need to know about, uh, let's, let's give it the Reader's Digest version.
I'll, I'll give it a quick, quick rundown. I'll turn in my report as well, but, uh, every month I attend the Sheriff Boosters Meeting, which, uh, we meet with, uh, both stations and talk about the issues and see what we can do to, uh, help raise money, uh, for local deputies. AVA QMD, we talked about, uh, funding fifteen thousand dollars for consulting for contractors for, uh, switching them to electric equipment, uh, also funding for alternative fuel vehicles. I attended the Joe Davies, uh, tribute, uh, monument sign in honoring Joe Davies at Joe Davies Air Park. Uh, we did concerts in the parks, had a couple lunches with some residents, including Jason Zink, who's on the General Plan Commission, and, uh, a couple other small things here and there, and I'll turn that report in.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Uh, essentially the same thing. I, I, I went to the same items, uh, the AVTA, we, uh, one of the things that happened is we got to go on a, uh, ride in an all-electric bus, the commuter bus, that's gonna be taking, uh, folks, uh, to and from, uh, Anlo Valley down to the San Fernando Valley in Los Angeles.
Gorgeous, wasn't it?
It's a, it's a beautiful thing, and, uh, AVTA is, is, uh, leading the...
We're almost there, huh?
Right.
Almost there.
Yeah. It's, it's leading the, uh, issue of electrifying all of our, uh, commuter buses, our local transit buses and everything else, so...
We're a hundred percent on the local right now.
Right. So it's great, uh, we, Los Angeles County Sanitation District, I had, we think we had a very brief meeting on that. And I attended the, uh, SCAG, uh, meeting that I think was on Thursday. Uh, the summer concerts, uh, I think were good. I think that perhaps, uh, one comment that I would make is that we had one on a Friday night and then one on Saturday, and I'm sure it's because of calendaring problems with, uh, with the concert series, but it'd be better, I think in the past it's been, you know, on Saturdays, and, uh, having one back-to-back, I think, uh, probably discourages people from coming back.
We got it, we could get them, right?
Right, yeah, we got Queen Nation, we can get them, and it was probably our most attended, well, most well-attended concert, but duly noted, I, I don't think staff prefers having back-to-back either, uh, but they wanted to make sure we brought the best that we can go, get during COVID.
Right.
No, one, one, everybody loved it, uh, people were, people are glad and they're happy to get out, and they're just having a good time, and, uh, I think they only had one guy that had a little bit too much of drink, uh, over there. But I think that the staff has been working outstanding. It's like Disneyland, they're keeping it so clean. I like Disneyland. Maybe we need to fix a couple of the signs, because some of the signs took you around the corner to the one vendors and not to the food trucks, and some people didn't know the food trucks are back there, and other people did, so, you know, maybe, you know, maybe that's my fault. Maybe when we get up there, we need to say, don't forget, you got all the, all those food trucks...
That was well-attended as well. One of the things that we've been working on since the workforce agreement was accepted is the fact that we're working with, with labor for developing more and more training programs. And on August the twentieth, there was a graduation ceremony for, I think it was about twenty-four persons that have gone through, at BYD, that have gone through the training. And when we talk about bringing about high-paying jobs, we're talking about getting people trained and educated here so that they can get these jobs, and, and, and I was very impressed with what they were doing. I was seriously being affected by the accident I had recently, so I kind of had to lean on the mayor over here so I wouldn't.
I'm happy to do it.
But that was one of the things, I thought that was, that was very impressive, and some really important labor representatives were there as well at that. I did attend the advisory restricting, redistricting committee meeting, just to see our commission members installed and to wish them well in their endeavor, so they're probably going to encounter some headwinds here and there. It's not an easy job that they're going to do, but I think we've got the right people to get it done. And so I attended that. And I'll also file a report on the rest of this.
Sir?
For me, I also attended the redistricting committee via Zoom, just to again thank him for their commitment to work on that committee. Thank you, Kerry, and your staff for putting those awesome four concerts, even the back-to-back, they were great. Thank you for doing that, and please let your staff know how appreciative we are of their efforts. C H D and SCAG meetings last week, there was something on C H D that really caught my attention, and is, that is that the census numbers are beginning to be released, and there was mention tonight about how the Hispanic community keeps growing, but it is the Asian community that is now growing at a faster rate than any other ethnicity, so I found that interesting. Nothing else, you know, of importance other than comments on those state deals for the last place, the ADUs and the buy-right subdivisions. I think that's SB nine, what's going on right now today.
Did you get vetoed today?
I didn't follow up on today, I've been here almost all day, so.
Yeah.
We'll find out. It is really good to see that.
They got letters sitting on my desk.
Yeah.
Need to know whether you need to bother signing it or putting it in the mail.
Right. So conferences are going back to, to live participation. California Contract Cities is this month at Indian Wells, and also the California League, I think we're supposed to call it the league anymore, but that's also happening in Sacramento on the twenty-second and twenty-third of this month, I believe. I'll be attending to both of those. I'll report on what the items of discussion were that pertain to, to local control and things like that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Laura?
Did file a report, but I just wanted to say to the council and to the city staff, a big thank you for your support and your kindness in helping me get through what I'm going through. And I want to thank the public for all of the calls and the emails and the cards that they've mailed to me. They've been tremendously supportive, and I just really appreciate it, so thank you.
You bet. Well, like, like we've all said, if you need something, let us know.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let me sum up, I'm sorry.
Let me just add one real quick that I didn't have in my notes here, but I am a member of the Sheriff Boosters, and I attend all of the meetings that I'm able to attend. I think most of them, we did have a meeting at the beginning of this month and a meeting at the beginning of last month that I attended.
Thanks. All right, I'll, I'll try to be quick, because you guys hit most of them. On AQMD, there was also about half a million dollars that was also distributed in grants. If you got a business and you want some money, sign up. If you don't ask, the answer's no. For clean vehicles, all that kind of stuff. Contract cities and a league of California cities, primary topics, we've had about probably ten legislative committee meetings. It's almost a daily update between the two of them on all these bills that are going through. Standby if a couple of them don't get vetoed, folks, you're not going to like it. We got a visitation coming up next week?
Monday first?
Is it the week after?
Week after.
Week after, with our friends from Ponsonlan Jalisco, Mexico, for which our Ponsonlan Square is named after, and I know the sister cities are going to be helping us participate in that. So that's always a good, a good event, and allows us to get a better perspective with our neighbors here. And I also participated in the redistricting. I came in, wished them luck, and I took off. I attended the, the industrial maintenance technician graduation along with Mr. Loa, and that, boy, that, that, that construction floor, assembly floor is really, it's buzzing. You should see everything that's out there. And they're building more trucks and things like this, too. We saw some prototypes in there for trash trucks and school buses, and that's been my thing, is we got a, we got a, Mr. Bishop will remember when we did that with one of the school districts, we got them the electric school bus. When you opened the hood, birds flew out. That's how clean it was, right? So I, I think it's just amazing that we have kids that are most vulnerable and we're putting them in a stinky, dirty diesel bus. I'm a diesel guy, I got a diesel truck, but I don't want to stick a bunch of kids in the bed of the truck either. So I think that, you know, as some of the folks were here from other school districts, if you guys need something, you want to clean up the air, we're removing a ton of dirty stuff out of the air every, every week. What the heck, I can't read some of my scratching here. The air park, that was a really nice event, some chamber luncheons and some great speakers, the last two speakers, the sheriff at one, and we had mental health at the other one. Thank you very much, Ron, you did a great job. And I would like to close tonight by wishing all of our friends happy rusha shada, so. City manager, do you have a thing you want to add to that? Watching your.
One more thing I just want to add in, the nine eleven remembrance ceremony is this Saturday at the AV mall.
Do we get an official invite on that thing yet?
It's, yeah, I think they put it on account, on our calendar.
Okay.
So nine AM, AV mall, nine eleven remembrance ceremony, right out front, I believe where the food court is.
Where the, where the big, where the flag, where the flags are.
Right by Doghouse and the restaurants and all that, so be there.
Three hundred and forty-three guys. You're good, sir? All right, well, we made it, a nick of time. We're going to go ahead and adjourn, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.